Well, good evening. My name is Mayor Erica A. Stewart, and I'm here to start our city council meeting. But before I do that, I just want to make sure, hold on, it's 5:30, so you have two and a half hours left. Just in case you haven't voted, you still have time to get to your polls. So, anyway, back to that. So, I want to ask you to join me if you are able and willing to pledge to the Pledge of Allegiance. Well, thank you very much. We will be starting off today with a presentation from SlowCog, which is our San Luis Obispo County Council of Governments. And before I do that, though, I just want to make sure that if you've seen those yellow slips over there by the city clerk, if you have any comments for items that are not on the agenda, or on the consent agenda, or on the public hearing, this is your time. Turn it in, get it ready, be in the queue. And with that, I will pass it off to Ms. Sarah Sanders for the report.
Good evening, Mayor Stewart and council members. Thanks for having me. I'm Sarah Sanders. I am the Planning Supervisor at the San Luis Obispo Council of Governments, and I'll be giving a brief overview of the regional transportation plan. Let's see, I'm just going to click. Yes, okay. So, before I get into the RTP, I want to explain who SlowCog is and what I mean by region. So, a council of governments is a public agency dedicated to serving local governments by seeking solutions that go beyond single jurisdictions. So, there are 23 in our state. And Metropolitan Planning Organization, or MPO, receives federal funding for planning transportation, and there are 18 in our state that account for 98% of our population. And then, there is a Regional Transportation Planning Agency, RTPA, and that agency receives state funding. So, Cogs can be designated as both or just one, and SlowCog is both, the MPO and the RTPA. SlowCog's geographic region is the entire county of San Luis Obispo. Our Board of Directors is made up of representatives from all seven cities and the five county Board of Supervisors. Mayor Stewart is our rep, on our Slow Cities rep on SlowCog's board. And like I mentioned before, we allocate federal and state funding, we facilitate governmental collaboration, we examine common regional problems and suggest solutions, and we prepare the long-range regional transportation plan. The RTP plans for 28 years into the future, so going to 2055, it's a long time period. It directs federal and state dollars towards transportation investments that we value in our communities. It must be updated every four years, and there are four main components. The first one is the policy element, which defines the region's transportation vision, goals, and objectives. The financial element, which identifies funding sources and ensures the RTP is within the estimated revenue budget. And the action element outlines the proposed transportation programs and investments across all modes, detailing activities by timeframe. And then, the Sustainable Community Strategy, which is required by the state, not the federal government, which is kind of interesting. It connects transportation with land use and housing policies to reduce greenhouse gas When creating our goals, we have both state and federal requirements, but in general, these goals, the seven goals that we have listed, are generally good planning practices. So, we want to keep our transportation system running smoothly, we want to make it easier for everyone to get around, we want to support a strong, resilient economy, we want to make travel safer and more secure, we want to build healthier, more connected communities, we want to protect our environment, and use fiscal resources wisely. As I mentioned before, the RTP suggested investments have to be within an estimated revenue of 28 years. So, it's projecting that we're going to have about $4 billion over those 28 years, but this can change depending on federal reauthorization, which we'll hear more about in probably mid next year. And then, using the 2023 RTP, we estimated the current need, which is $7 billion. So, already, there's a significant funding gap of $3 billion. The financial element also goes into detail on key funding challenges that contribute to this gap, such as construction inflation, the weakening of the gas tax revenues, and the state's transition to electric vehicles. The action element describes the modes of travel, maintenance, investments, and improvements. A key component of the element is identifying investments. So, we work with your staff to identify the needed investments and their estimated costs. Cost estimates change, but we still need them because our plan must be within that revenue budget. Investments that fit within the estimated revenue plan are considered fundable within the 28-year plan, and those that are needed but there isn't a funding source identified are considered unfunded. In the 2023 RTP, I wanted to bring up a few examples of the investments that we have for Slow City. There are 54 projects listed, currently listed, in the 2023 RTP. Some notable projects include the Prado Road Interchange, which looks like you're going to be talking about today, the Madonna-Higera roadway realignment, the Railroad Safety Trail, and safe routes to school improvements. So, we'll be working with your staff to update this list over the next few months. And then, lastly, we have the Sustainable Community Strategy, and this is only required by the state, and it identifies how we should accommodate the projected changes in our land use and transportation system while trying to meet the state's greenhouse gas reduction emissions targets. This is all done working with your planning teams and your public works teams, and we model those changes. So, what kind of engagement is currently happening, and how you can get involved? We currently have an RTP Steering Committee, which was created by meeting with 35 out of the 40 elected officials earlier this year. They recommended people from all over the county, representing a bunch of different business organizations and kind of modal groups. So, we have someone that represents transit, we have someone that represents the biking community. So, we have a pretty broad scope on our steering committee. And then, the SlowCog Board and the Transportation Advisory Committees will be weighing in on the development at least 12 times. So, pretty much every board meeting this year, next year, and most of 2027, we'll have a presentation item, and our next meeting is December 3. And then, early next year, we'll be distributing a land use and transportation survey. And then, right now, we have a budgeting tool, which you can find by clicking on the QR code up on the screen, and that is shared with the Local Roads First budgeting tool. We just didn't want to duplicate efforts, and this tool allows you to allocate certain number of dollars to certain transportation themes. So, that, and then, we have our fact sheets, some videos on the RTP on our website, and then, our next big in-person meeting will be January 9 on the first floor of the new Government Center from 9:30 to 11:00. And I'm hoping to do more of these RTP 101 presentations, so feel free to reach out. And with that, the RTP is a high-level planning document that allows a region to receive and compete for transportation funds from the state and federal government. We update this plan every four years, so it takes about two and a half years to develop. Our guidelines for this development are relatively complex, just the guidelines alone are about 300 pages, so with requirements and suggestions. So, I know it seems like a lot, but it's really important that we have people engage in this process because you are all interacting in the transportation system every day. So, hearing your voice on where you want those transportation dollars to go is critical to us moving this plan forward. So, with that, our December 3 meeting at the SlowCog Board Meeting will be discussing the action element overview. We're not talking about specific investments, more of an overview of what's in the action element. We'll be bringing up action strategies and how we're accomplishing those goals, or trying to accomplish those goals within the four years. And then, we'll be daylighting some sustainable community strategies, modeling scenarios. And with that, thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. I love that it takes two and a half years to create the plan, and then, we'll be just working on it for about a year, but thank you, truly. And I really appreciate all of the engagement, though, that you're really trying to get, and to the community who may be here today, or watching, or all of our colleagues, trying to continue to get you some more information on how to get more people to provide input. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for my colleagues? Councilmember Francis?
Just a brief one. Right at the end, you said something that was sort of intriguing to me, and I was wondering if you could tell me a little bit more. You mentioned at the upcoming meeting, you're going to be daylighting some sustainable communities modeling scenarios.
Yeah.
And I'd love to hear a little bit more about what that is and what that looks like.
Okay, so it's very high level. So, what we do is take the 2023 RTP, and we build off of that one. So, our last scenario was called the Transportation Efficiency Analysis with a jobs-housing balance combination. And so, this takes all of your land use planning, so city of Slow and the other six cities, and then, the county of Slow, we put it all together, and we see where your planning development and where our transportation investments are going to go, so then, we can make sure we're meeting CARB's requirements. So, I know that's maybe a little too jargony.
That's all right. Do we expect to see kind of new scenarios from the last time when this was presented?
Yes, yeah. And we met with the planning directors a few weeks ago, we talked to them about the scenarios, they gave us a great insight on what's coming up and how we can adjust them, and so, that will be going to our board just as a conversation. And then, the real, well, not the real, the modeling will be narrowed down over the next two meetings.
So, this is kind of a high-level discussion of it, and then, eventually, there'll be time for kind of public feedback on those models?
Yes.
Thank you.
And we'll bring that, we'll be also bringing a laptop for the January 9 meeting and stuff, too.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, not really a question, I suppose, but more of a comment and a thank you, because I know, as you mentioned, we're talking later in the meeting about the Prado Road Interchange, and a very long-time coming project, and a very expensive one. And even at the best-case scenario, we're looking at, you know, over $100 million. And so, I know that staff has been working, that our staff have been working with you on locating funding mechanisms for that, and just want to, I guess, make a plea that you continue to work with our staff on finding funding mechanisms for that, because it's a big project and it has lots of regional benefits. So, thank you, and please.
I'll make sure programming, I will relay that to Rich and his team tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll continue to pass it on to Councilmember Marks.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm concerned about that shortfall that you had, $3 billion, sounds like a lot. Are there any plans or ideas about addressing that shortfall?
Yes, so, one of the things that SlowCog is looking into is a regional sales tax measure that will be coming to, I think, our SlowCog Board for a draft for the financing plan in December, and then, coming to you, your city council, I think, in January. So, that is one mechanism, but we do look at other ways of funding that. But, yeah, it's a pretty big gap.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, with no other questions, I will let you go on with your evening. Thank you so much. So, next, we have the City Manager Report from City Manager Whitney McDonald. Everything okay over there? Okay, here we go.
Good evening, everyone. We have a number of kind of fun things to highlight this evening on our City Manager Report. The first is wanting to make sure everyone's aware that our winter evening access is open again to our local trails. This provides hiking and biking opportunities at Saro San Luis from November through March. This program requires a reservation permit, it is free, and it is available for up to 65 users per day. Really, the permit and the registration requirement was a way that we needed to use in order to make sure we were complying with all of our environmental requirements and making sure access was being used responsibly kind of across the board. It's been really popular, hopefully, people have been able to give it a try, and we tend to have plenty of permits available. So, please go to slowparksandrec.org, or call our Parks and Rec office at 805-781-7300. If you have any questions about how to get a permit, any safety tips or questions, and more information about our trails and activities, you'll see a tiny QR code up there as well. We have lots of information available online for how to make sure you have access to this opportunity. Moving along on the theme of our Parks and Rec opportunities in the winter, we are offering a winter swim pass program, which allows you to get one free month if you buy two months of swim access. This runs from basically November to February, and so, if you purchase November and December, you could get February free, or any iteration like that in there. The pass is available for adults at $146.50, and then, youth and seniors is $131 for a whole month as well. So, this holiday, you can give the gift of swimming to anybody in your family. On top of that, we are offering our Slow Bingo process, and with an opportunity for people to win a I Swim Slow mug and two free swim passes. So, come on by and try to get all those cards on your, those stamps on your bingo card. Next, we want to just make sure to highlight a really amazing event that happened over the weekend at our Mission Plaza on November 1. Our Office of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, along with representatives from our police department, participated in the Dia de los Muertos event held in the plaza. The event was organized by the Latino Outreach Council, and we extend a huge thanks for their passion and ongoing commitment to bringing this event to our community. The festival brought together art, music, and culture, and created space for reflection, connection, and belonging across our community. One of the highlights this year was the wonderful displays of afrendas for our community to pause and share in the memories of their loved ones. So, we really want to say thank you to everybody who participated and the offices who helped this come to be. If you're interested in learning more about the work of our Office of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, please go to slowcity.org/DEI, or email our DEITeam@DEI@slowcity.org. We also wanted to, just in case folks were kind of curious about some of the happenings over the last weekend, we've put together a little bit of a recap of our Safety Enhancement Zone during the holiday, weekend, and event. So, between October 24 through 27, and then, the weekend of Halloween, starting on Thursday through Monday, we did have our Safety Enhancement Zone in effect, which meant that certain violations came with a double fine. Our police department staffing was increased during this timeframe to manage a really busy weekend that happened over the last weekend, which you can see in some of those citation numbers up there. But you can also see some of the positive things that our staff gets to participate in as well. Our department had dedicated so-called party cars out. Don't know how much it's a party for the folks who engage with them at that point, but we're happy they're out there to address noise complaints, and they included our patrol, CSO, and SNAP officers. Just as a reminder, during the Safety Enhancement Zone, again, fines for open container, public urination, noise, and unruly gathering are doubled. So, it was a successful weekend in the sense of everybody was safe, everyone was okay, and we had a lot of resources out there in the community, making sure that everyone was safe and trying to, you know, enjoy responsibly. We also, next, want to highlight another really exciting event that happened recently at the end of October. We officially opened our new Water Resource Recovery Facility. So, this project began back in 2014, was when the design started. Construction then began in September 2019 and just was completed in October. You'll see our ribbon-cutting ceremony up there. Our problem-solving and close collaboration with our construction team allowed us to deliver this largest project to date. Now, we may, we'll be talking about the other one coming up that might surpass it, but this one was $140 million, and it was delivered within budget. We're happy to report that the project also exceeded our Community Workforce Agreement goal of 30% of the workforce being from this region. With more than 400,000 hours, nearly 80% of the labor for this project came from our local area, and nearly half from workers within San Luis Obispo County. More than 10,000 hours of apprentice training were completed on-site, which also helped to grow the next generation of skilled workers on our Central Coast. Our upgraded Wharf, as we call it, although I have said that term before, and people want to know where the dock is, so I realize that might be confusing to people, but Water Resource Recovery Facility. It includes a number of improvements that not only help us meet our regulatory requirements, but further our Lead-by-Example Climate Action Plan by maximizing the delivery of recycled water and increasing production of our on-site renewable energy. It also meets our community needs through a future-proof technology that's responsive to the impacts of climate change. And I think some folks will be really excited to know, we have installed extensive odor control management systems that should make just general quality of life better. Of course, the facility is also designed to help our growing community and address the needs into the future. And we're also expanding outreach programs, including partnerships with Cal Poly to develop new, innovative, and cost-effective treatment methods. This has been a really wonderful partnership with students and faculty at Cal Poly over many years, to really make sure we're bringing the best technology forward. So, if anybody's curious about what it looks like and how it operates, and I really encourage everybody to have that curiosity, just like, say, going to our landfill, you know, what happens with our waste at the end of the day? We really encourage you to sign up for a tour, so please go to slowwater.org, and you can click on the Request a Tour of Facilities button, which you can see a red arrow up there. In addition to tours of our Wharf, tours of our Drinking Water Treatment Plan are also available on request. It is not at this location, it is a very different location, but it is also a very fascinating process, so really encourage folks who are curious to go check it out. Moving along to actually a little bit of a theme on the water topic, our city has debuted a new informational kiosk and bike maintenance system out at the Whale Rock Trail Public Access Point. So, out at the Whale Rock Reservoir, we have a system of amazing trails and access for fishing on the shore as well. And our staff has come together to make sure that people are aware and have this kiosk to give them more information about what's in the area and how to access all these trails for hiking, biking, and again, fishing, and just enjoying the surroundings. I will, it's, I love it's in my notes, but you wouldn't really have to tell me, this bird watching is also a very popular activity out there. It's not actually hard to see some bald eagles out there, so hopefully, people will go out and take advantage. Public access is daily from 6:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. We also want to make sure everyone is aware, and that we are really excited to announce, and hopefully, some folks have seen this announcement go out, we're having our first-ever Council Candidate Education Forum coming up very soon, next week, on Thursday, November 13, at the Library Community Room across the street, from noon to 2:00 p.m. Lunch will be provided, so if anybody's hungry and/or curious about what it means to be thinking about running for office, we're really excited to bring this forward. This is an inclusive environment to learn the basics about the city, what it's like to serve on the city council, and to gather resources on how to run for office. So, if you have like maybe even just a tiny inkling, this might be something you might want to do now or at some time in the future, please come check it out. We're asking folks to register, just so that we have a good count, but please come on by if you're just curious. It will be held right after the Latino Outreach Council meeting. It will include roughly one-hour presentation, and then, an hour for questions and answers. And if you have any questions or need any kind of accommodations, including translation services or childcare even, we are able to provide that. Please reach out to our project lead, Natalie Harnett, at H-Harnett, H-A-R-N, Harnett, N-H-A-R-N-E-T-T, at slowcity.org, or really, City Clerk's Office, or any other way of getting ahold of us. And then, finally, just wanted to make sure folks are aware of a few items that are next meeting coming up on November 18. Just want to highlight, we will be updating our city's specifications and engineering standards. That might not sound super exciting to everyone, but it is a big lift for us, and it will be incorporating some of our WUWE code requirements that we talked about in early October. Kind of moving to our next page, we will also be authorizing the use of specific funding for what's called the Open Loop Payment System. What that means is a tap-to-pay system for transit providers, so we're really excited that'll be easy for transit riders to be able to have that access. We will be bringing forward a reorganization for our Public Works and Utilities Departments and creation of a couple of new classification positions, authorization for bidding our transit service contracts, so that's a pretty big deal for us. That's, TransDev currently provides our bus services, they run our buses, we'll be just issuing an RFP to get a new contract in place. And then, finally, the Hearing and Business item is introduction of our ordinance for the Building Fire and WUWE, or Wildland Urban Interface Codes. So, and that's it from me for my report.
Thank you. A lot of information, always, because there's always a lot going on. But with the City Council Candidate Education Forum, will that have a remote opportunity as well, or only in-person?
I believe it's only in-person, but we will be recording it as well and have the, having the same information available.
Perfect. I can see that, you know, maxing out, maybe, you never know. Okay, and then, as far as the Halloween numbers, do we have that comparison to last year yet?
We've talked a bit about that internally. I think the challenge we have in trying to compare it to prior years is where Halloween falls. It's really difficult to get a like-for-like comparison, and then, the additional kind of difference this year was it was both Halloween weekend and Parents Weekend at Cal Poly, and it just added a whole additional layer of people and different activities, and so, we don't have a good way of comparing them at this time.
Apples to come quads, got it.
Right, exactly.
Thank you so much, I appreciate that. Well, I don't see any questions from my colleagues, so now, it's time for public comment for items not on the agenda. So, if you are here for an item that is not on the agenda, the city clerk will call your name.
Okay, I only have one speaker card for that, this, and that is Dr. Jill Sterns.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Stewart and council members. I just come this evening to share a little bit about our dual enrollment program and express appreciation for our partnership with San Luis Obispo High School. So, last year, we had 347 students at San Luis Obispo High School who participated in the dual enrollment program, enrolled across 38 different class sections, and in the last three years, we have served 1,014 students at San Luis Obispo High. I don't know if you received the handout, but I left those with Teresa, thank you. And it shows you the top 10 enrolled classes at San Luis Obispo High School, and auto technology is at the top of the list, which is very interesting to me, that the popularity of those courses in particular. But you can see the variety of things that are available, but it's not just the individual classes, it's really intentional career pathways and preparation for transfer that's available to students. And you can see that in the last three years, 122 San Luis Obispo High School students have become transfer-prepared through the dual enrollment program, allowing them to go as a junior into the university of their choice. And then, 98 students have earned degrees at Questa College. And then 98 students have earned degrees at Questa College following their dual enrollment. What we also know and is incredibly important is that students who participate in dual enrollment attend their college at a rate of 80%. And that percentage is 32% when you look at general students. And so it has an incredible impact. We appreciate San Luis Obispo High School's working with us, allowing us to be on their campus and provide this opportunity for students. And because of their partnership and those of other local high schools, we serve the highest percentage of dual enrollment students in the state of California. So thank you very much and have a great evening.
Thank you. That is fantastic news. I can't, I can't help but get excited about that and that's how excited we get here. No, truly, thank you so much. The, the career pathways that, you know, we continue to look at in our community is Questa and Hancock are just such great opportunities for our students to get so much more knowledge. So with that, we'll move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda is items that are considered not really controversial typically, but sometimes we pull those. And I will say that right now I am pulling the calendar item that maybe I will find, 5C, the schedule of city council meetings. Anything else that my colleagues like to pull? Okay. So if we have any public comments for items A, B, D, and E? No, we do not. Okay, wonderful. With that, can I have a motion? Vice Mayor?
I'll go, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve all but item C.
Thank you. Councilmember Boswell?
Second.
Second, thank you. Can we have roll call?
Vice Mayor Shoresman?
Yes.
Councilmember Boswell?
Yes.
Councilmember Francis?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Mayor Stewart?
Yes, and the motion passes 5-0. So wanting to bring 5C forward. I feel like we have some conversations around which meetings to move around on a pretty regular basis. And this year, we have on, with our elections, we have a new citywide single vote process. And I'd like to make sure that we have at least one city council meeting that our community members can attend as they're making their final decision if they'd like to be a candidate. So that is why I'd like to suggest that we make a little amendment to this process here. And so number two, cancel the, cancel the regular city meeting of August 4th. I'd like to see August 4th stay and we could take the second meeting in July. So we'd have two meetings off in July. So that's what I'm suggesting. Wanted to hear if there were any interests in that or not. Councilmember Marks?
I think it's a great idea for that reason and also a lot of, a lot of school districts are, people are taking vacations during that time and parents of, you know, want to go to. Also, Cal Poly will be starting early this year, August 13th. So those of us in the audience, maybe in the council, who are going to be involved with the teaching aspect of Cal Poly will probably want to be preparing during August and having vacation during July. So I think it's a good idea.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Just want to make sure I'm clear. You said two meetings in July. You just want to skip the July 21st meeting. Am I understanding that correctly?
No, I would want, yes, sorry, yes, yes.
So still have the meeting on July 7th, just skip the 21st and then go back to August 4th?
Correct. Thank you so much.
Okay, just making sure I understood that. Thank you.
Councilmember Boswell, thank you.
Yeah, I was, well, I was going to ask, why not July 7th instead? I mean, I always feel like one of the challenges is when there's holiday weekends in front of the council, particularly with agenda correspondence. I mean, I'm, I'm fine with the proposal and the calendar as is, but I was curious about that one instead, particularly because July 4th is on a Saturday, so Friday's a holiday. And I could see people doing four-day weekends as well.
Yeah, I'm absolutely fine with the first weekend in July also or either way. Councilmember Francis?
Yeah, having mapped out the current scenario with my different school calendars already, I'm, I'm pretty married to what's presented here at this point, but I understand there's some, some good reasons to shift it around, but I'm going to stick with as presented.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
I don't, I don't know if there's any way to do this. Because we don't have anybody from Cal Poly here. Well, we do, sort of. I don't know if Councilmember Boswell can confirm when Cal Poly is going to start. I know it is a strange year because of going to semesters, but I feel like I saw in the presentation that Cal Poly gave last meeting that the first day of classes was going to be August 24th, but maybe that's the old date of when it would have started.
Well, there's also WoW and that'll be the week before that, too.
I've got the calendar up. So first day of classes is August 24th, but the report back day for faculty is August 17th. And that'll be, that, that August 17th week will also be the WoW week and move in and things of that nature.
Thanks, I was, I, thanks, that's helpful. So we, we would still have our eight, our meeting on the 18th anyway. We're not talking about skipping that one. Okay, thank you.
No, we would, that would be the second day back. Yeah. So with that, I guess I'm hearing some potential, one, no, thank you, let's not change it. Three, potential with potentially changing, skipping the August 4th and having the August 4th meeting and either skipping one of the July meetings. I'm pretty open with either one and I hear you, Councilmember Boswell, as far as it's always a little tough around the holiday, Fourth of July as well. I'd be happy to suggest that one instead. Sorry, I'm trying to get back to that calendar. Councilmember Marks?
Yeah, I'm just curious, what are the dates of the window during which people can apply for, to run for city council?
Thank you. That was the other question I was going to bring up and totally forgot to. City Clerk?
I'm going off the top of my head, so it's not exact, but it's as close as I can remember. July 13th through August 10th, oh no, August 14th.
Which is why I wanted to make sure we have an August 4th meeting because if we don't have an August 4th meeting, someone is considering maybe running early July and then we don't have another meeting for them to really go to and they have to turn in their paperwork. So that was why I was thinking that it would be helpful this year to have an August 4th meeting, especially with the change to citywide single vote. So with that, I have now pulled up the 26th calendar. Happy to suggest that we cancel, or sorry, keep the August 4th meeting a number two and cancel the July 7th meeting. Would that be amenable to the people who are open? Sorry, Councilmember Francis.
Councilmember Marks?
I'd like to make that motion.
Great, thank you. I'd be happy to second that. Any other input? Vice Mayor?
So the, the motion is for removing the July 7th and reinstating the August 4th, correct?
Correct.
I don't, I think I'm quiet because I don't really have a strong opinion, so apologies. I'm on the fence a little.
That's okay, I understand. I'm kind of throwing this out because you can't really talk about it ahead of time because Brown Act, so. With that, since we have a motion and a second, can we go to public comment? Anyone on public comment?
There's none.
Okay, didn't think there would be since we didn't have it forward yet, but thank you. So with that, is there any way that I can convince you, Councilmember Francis, to be a little more interested or, I mean, we can always do a 4-1 or a 3-2, just throw in it. Okay, great.
Can I just clarify?
Yeah.
That would mean that we would go from June 17th all the way to July 31st without a meeting?
We'd have July 21st.
Okay, so what you're doing is in the right in the middle, you're breaking it.
Mm-hmm, correct.
We'll make sure.
Yeah, we'd still be having one meeting in July, one meeting in August. We would just be, or two meetings in August. Sorry, we would have, yeah, all the meetings in August. Thank you. All right, so with that, can we have a roll call to cancel the July 7th and reschedule or reinstate the August 4th meeting, keeping the rest of 5C the same?
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Mayor Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember Francis?
Yes.
Councilmember Boswell?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shoresman?
Yes.
Thank you, and the motion passes 5-0. Thank you, Councilmember Francis. And with that, we'll move on to our public hearing and business items. So first, we have, we have the budget. We have city manager will be kicking off our budget. And then we have finance director Emily Jackson and principal budget analyst Riley Kuhn. So I will pass it over to the city manager to start us.
Thank you. I think maybe while we're pulling the presentation up, I'll just, I just want to, first of all, thank staff. You'll see a lot of our staff members in the audience because it takes a, every single department and department heads and fiscal officers and a number of other staff members to pull our year-end report together. Just a quick reminder that what we've presented here is based on unaudited financials. And so there are likely to be some changes between what we've presented here and what we bring back with the audit itself. We are not recommending making any appropriations from what we have estimated as fund balance this evening because we want to make sure we have our audit completed before those appropriations are made. Our plan is to come back with our second quarter budget report, which some people we've called in the past or in other instances, our mid-year budget report. And then at that time, make recommendations and have conversations about appropriations from the year-end fund balance at that point because we will have our audit completed. Of course, I know you've received a lot of correspondence. We've submitted staff correspondence as well related to the request from SLoma for some additional funding. And if council wants to give us direction on bringing forward a grant agreement or making appropriations at that mid-year budget report, we're more than happy to take that recommendation and work through that process and bring it back. There's a few options that we've provided in the staff agenda correspondence just for, if that is the direction we, we're provided, we would recommend we go off and work on a grant agreement and bring it back at that point. And then I'm happy to answer any questions. We know there's, there's a lot of different moving parts happening. The other piece I would just highlight is that through this process of analyzing where we ended the year, it helped give us a better picture of where we believe we will be heading in this fiscal year and over our current financial plan. The good thing is that we talked during our last financial planning process about an identified structural deficit that we were going to quickly start undertaking really deep conversations about budget reduction options. Our staff, too, has spent a lot of time preparing some potential options. We will be discussing those actually over the next couple of days. We're going to be locked in this room over here for a couple of days, having really intensive conversations. The, the good thing that we have to report is that the deficit is, we believe, will, will be much lower than what we had anticipated. So I just want to set that stage for the conversations about, potential conversations about year-end funding as well as just where we're at with our year-end financial picture, which of course our team here will go into more details on. So the good thing is that what we will be bringing forward next March for discussions with council about potential reduction options will be less than what we had anticipated originally. So with that, happy to kick it over. Thank you.
Thanks, Whitney. Mayor and council members, tonight's presentation includes a preliminary view of fiscal year 2024, 25 unaudited results. And we're also going to take a deep dive on the city's major city goals and our capital improvements program. Starting with operating expenditures, the good news is all funds finished within their operating budgets and at the service levels that we all expect. And while we're showing savings across the board here, I think it's important to keep in mind that we set the current year budget with constrained base budgeting, which means some of the cushion that we're seeing here has been shaken out. The revenue picture by fund is a little bit more interesting and I have two yellow caution check marks here for the general fund and the transit fund. And in both cases, the funds missed their projections because of shortfalls in federal funding unrelated to the current shutdown. The general fund missed its revenue targets largely due to unreceived FEMA reimbursements for the winter 2023 storms. And we'll go into a little bit more detail on that afterwards. And the transit fund missed its projections for, I think now familiar reasons, federal grants for bus purchases weren't realized and so this staff will have to reapply for those in the current year. The slides that follow, we're going to take a deeper dive on just the general fund performance, starting with how the current year results compared to recent years. This slide shows the variances to budget for both revenues and expenditures. And what this means is basically that we've typically collected more revenue than we expected and we spent less than we had budgeted. In fiscal year 2024, 25, you'll see that we underperformed on revenue, but we had more than enough expenditure savings to offset that. And that the, the trend is very clearly tightening, so we have less savings than we typically observed and that's been true of the last few years as well. But one thing that's important is to understand the makeup of the city's, the general fund's revenue in particular, and the slides that follow will be a deeper dive on where the general fund earns its revenues. Starting with taxes, there's a bit of good news. Staff cautioned that we expected a miss in sales tax and we did realize a miss of about $2 million, but other tax revenue streams were sufficient to offset that, largely from property taxes and transient occupancy taxes. And there's a similar story in user fees where our community development department cautioned that their application fees were underperforming by about $1 million. That was also offset by parks and recs user fees and by the fire department. Moving down the line, storm reimbursement, as I announced, it was underperforming. We realized just under $1 million out of a budget of 8.7. And Emily has some more information on where all of that stands at the moment, but the final number here is in our other revenue and that's where investment income sits. The city generated just over $5 million from this investment income and we'll zoom in on that in a few slides, but we do treat that as a one-time funding source. It gives us a bottom line miss of budget of about $1 million. So here we'll look at sales tax over the past few years and the current year budget. A good rule of thumb for sales tax forecasting is that year-over-year growth should be roughly equivalent to the inflationary rate plus the population growth rate. And by that metric, our growth rates have not been all that impressive. We did see an inflection in the current fiscal year, growth of 1.8% versus 0.9% in the year prior, but this is still sub-inflationary. The current year budget assumes growth of about 2.1%, which is still sub-inflationary growth. And our consultants are signaling that we do see some risk to that number. When we set the budget, there was a lot of anxiety around tariffs and impacts that we would feel. Most of those took effect in April, so Q4 was fully tariff burdened. We don't have a lot of data to suggest what the impact has been or will be. We didn't see, for example, spike in car sales from people rushing out before price increases. And we also didn't see a sharp decline in consumer spending, so we're still in more of a wait-and-see approach. And the last slide that I'd like to walk you through is a visual on our investment income trend. And I think this is a very interesting trend and interesting revenue stream. The chart here shows both cash income received, so money in the bank, and fair market value adjustments, which you might have also heard called mark-to-market accounting. And these are paper gains and losses. In recent years, we've benefited from In recent years, we've benefited from elevated interest rates to combat inflation. The city invests its idle cash in very safe, very liquid securities just to make sure that we're earning some money when we aren't spending money immediately. We've also benefited from falling interest rates. So as an investor in these securities, the best position to be in is for interest rates to be high but falling. And that creates kind of a temporary gain as the, our portfolio is paying rates of return that are higher than the market rate. Investors would be willing to pay more to buy them from us. But I also intentionally included fiscal year 2022 in this trend to show kind of the pitfall of banking on this being an ongoing funding source. As interest rates rise, the opposite happens, so our portfolio loses value. Fiscal year '22 seems somewhat unlikely and, under current circumstances, we do have enough cash income to offset a pretty sizable mark-to-market adjustment. But if inflation were to turn upwards again, or if there was a liquidity crisis that caused interest rates to rise, we could see that negative fair market value adjustment hit again. And another reason not to treat it as an ongoing funding source is that there's really no reason to expect it to grow. So it can't be used, for example, to fund positions if it's expected to decline. But for the last fiscal year, this did provide a much-needed offset to the miss in FEMA revenue to ensure that we had fund balance available at year end. And I'll pass the slides to Emily to cover what that fund balance is.
Thank you, Riley. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Happy to be here this evening to finally wrap up '24-25 from a budgetary standpoint only. The accounting team is still working hard on the year-end audit, which is why you will see emboldened on a couple of slides, the, the numbers here as a reminder are preliminary and unaudited. But we recognize that the most exciting part of the year-end report is always how much money do we think we're going to have available for allocation at the end of the year? And so we'll start there and then go through some additional information that's included in the report. So like Whitney noted, we're expecting at this point, based on where we are with the audit, that we're going to have about $4.1 million in unassigned fund balance to allocate come February when we present the second quarter financial report for fiscal year '25-'26 to your council. This is a look at how we get there. This may be a little bit too in the weeds, but it's also probably something you're somewhat accustomed to seeing in our act for, for those of you who really like to, to dig into the accounting of the city. But fun, unassigned fund balance is really the result of how did we end the year compared to what we had budgeted, plus what do we have to assign and commit every year? Assigning and committing is a term for, an accounting term for, we said we were going to do this thing, the council committed to spending a certain amount of money on a certain thing, we just haven't done it yet. And so examples of that include the $2 million that we assign in anticipation that we will annually make the additional discretionary payment to CalPERS, the $6.7 million that we've committed to funds. The Slow Rep project is included in there as well as a number of, of different items. And so that's what makes up a portion of that number, and there's a, a lot of other things in there as well. On the next slide, there we go. We include our quarterly storm reimbursement and project completion update. This is a format that you'll probably be used to seeing. We've been including it in the council monthly updates. At this point, the Public Works Department, Utilities, Parks and Rec, and others who are responsible for actually building some of these projects is still working to complete some storm-related projects. And the Finance Department is continuing to work through the FEMA process to ensure that we're able to maximize our reimbursement for the, the unbudgeted costs that we incurred related to the winter 2023 storms. At this point, we have been obligated for reimbursement, close to $2 million for our projects. That means that FEMA has said, yes, we are going to give you this money. And once they make that determination, it's a bit of a waiting game to, you know, actually get the checks. At this point, we've received just under $1 million, which feels like a pretty big victory, but is obviously not what we had budgeted for, not what we had anticipated. But despite the, the federal shutdown, I think that, you know, we are, we are still continuing to field questions from FEMA somehow. I, I'm a little bit perplexed about what the breakdown of responsibility is at this point. I think the people that we're working with are largely contractors, which is probably why we're still seeing some activity. And we've, we're, we're working actively to respond to those questions on a daily basis. But at this point, we're owed about $1 million. We have just under $7 million pending final review by FEMA. Important to note here that for the bulk of, of that, just under $7 million is related to our single largest and most expensive project, which is our San Luis Drive project, as well as our citywide debris removal project, which came in just under $1.5 million. Because each of those projects on their own are over the $1 million mark, they require congressional review and approval prior to obligation. So at this point, for those two projects, FEMA has done their work. They've said, we recommend that we pay the city of San Luis Obispo back for these projects, and it needs to go to Congress for review and approval. At this point, we're still not entirely clear on what congressional review and approval looks like, but it's of course not going to happen in the midst of a shutdown as Congress is not currently in session. We've also got just under $9 million of projects that are still being actively reviewed by FEMA. Like I said, we've been continuing to field questions, though the frequency of those has decreased, and we're not sure if that's shutdown-related or if it's because we've provided so much information already. So I think only time will tell. I, I continue to be cautiously optimistic that we will receive reimbursement beyond what we already have. We are effectively owed $1 million at this point, though I recognize, and I, I think it's important to acknowledge, that the rules are, maybe don't apply as much as they used to based upon what we're seeing. And so we're continuing to actively monitor and make sure that we're clear about what is happening at the federal level so that we can plan accordingly and early in case we need to take any measures to mitigate the potential that we don't receive additional funding. That leads nicely into a, a, a slide that kind of covers the city's exposure to the federal funding and the, the risk that we may incur if the shutdown continues much longer. At this point, I think everybody's aware that based on Congress not being able to come to agreement today, we are officially in the longest shutdown in the history of the country. And that's starting to have really real impacts for members of our community and others across the country. Fortunately for us as an organization, we, our, our federal exposure is largely related to our transit program. I think it's really important to acknowledge, though, that that's not the only way that we and our, our residents feel the impacts of a shutdown, right? Our, the county is heavily funded with federal dollars, as are a lot of our nonprofit partners, all of whom work together to provide a lot of important safety net programs to members of our community who rely on those. So while there's not a really direct impact to the city's operations outside of the transit program, I, I think it's really important that we all recognize and understand the impacts that it has on the community and on some of the agencies that serve members of our community who, you know, may be turning to us for assistance down the road. For the transit program, the, the transit program, as we've talked about, is largely federally funded, and we rely, there's, we rely heavily on that program to help people navigate through our community. At this point, the Federal Transit Administration has provided information to local agencies that they have funding to help support operations for several months. It's unclear, I, I think we're still lacking a bit of clarity about how that's going to work. But the good news is that the city's transit, the city's transit program has sufficient money in reserves to help sustain operations for approximately a year past the expiration of any additional federal funding coming in. So while that obviously is, is not sufficient in order to sustain our transit operation in the long term, we do have some amount of cushion which should provide us with an opportunity to figure out alternate things that we may be able to do to provide that level of service to our community. Shifting gears a little bit away from the finances, the year-end report always includes an update on the status of staff's progress on addressing all the tasks you identified in your major city goals for the '23-'25 financial plan. There were a total of 145 tasks. 129, close to 90% of them, were completed or are ongoing. The report includes some information about what does it mean to have completed each task, as well as what does it mean that some of these are still ongoing? This is a high-level look organized by major city goal category. And then on the next, the slide and the next, we highlight those ones that have been assigned yellow, meaning that progress on those major city goal items is delayed, but there's a potential, with potential setbacks, but we have some workable solutions in place. Those in addition to the ones that have been identified as, as red, which indicates that we have identified some problems that have emerged and we don't have a solution yet, are, are still being worked through. And there's additional information in the report about the status of each of those and what we think the path forward and the, the revised timing may be. And then finally, wanted to provide a, a quick update on all of the good work that was done in fiscal year '24-'25 on our capital improvement program. Our Public Works Department continues to do an outstanding job of managing a really large capital portfolio. In '24-'25, we saw 31 projects completed with a value of just over $41 million. That's a really, really significant number of projects and dollars to get out the door. Includes a lot of infrastructure projects, you know, to support water and sewer line replacements, road maintenance, parking structure projects, a water treatment plant generated, and a lot of other things that help us to deliver really critical services to our community. There's a number of projects that are ongoing. Those are listed on this slide. And then we have, oops, sorry. We've got a number of projects that are currently in design, really big dollar, a long time in the planning projects, legacy projects as we call them, including the California Taft Roundabout, the Prado Bridge Widening, and the Prado Interchange Project, which you'll be hearing about in the next item. So with that, that concludes staff's presentation this evening. The recommendation before your council is to receive and file the year-end report, and we will be back in February with recommendations for how to allocate the currently estimated $4.1 million of unassigned fund balance. Happy to take any questions.
Well, thank you so much. That was very succinct, and you also included a lot of my questions, so thank you, appreciate it. With that, Councilmember Francis.
Yeah, thank you so much. Just a couple of quick ones. I understand there's been some discussion about shifting, the discussion about the, the fund balance to after the audit, and I was wondering if you could describe the advantages of that and what that process would look like?
Sure. So, yeah, we run into this issue every year where we, we, we try to, we try to report to council and the community about how we ended the prior quarter as soon as we can because we understand that there's a lot of interest and we want to be transparent about where we're ending each quarter in the year. The difficulty that we run into is that we're preparing the report at, at the same time that our auditors are taking a look at all of our numbers. As you're aware, we have, we go through an annual audit process. The purpose of that, again, is to ensure that we're handling and managing our finances appropriately and to get a, a third-party take on that. And that's reported out on typically after the start of the new year in January. The difficulty is that we're kind of flying the plane while we build it, while, as we're preparing the year-end report. And so we've been giving some thought to how do we minimize the back and forth and some of the swings that we, we, we can see in the amount of unassigned fund balance as we go through the audit by considering presenting it to council, probably just about a month later than what we normally do. Typically, by the end, middle to end of November, we have the audit pretty well wrapped up, and we're just working on developing our annual comprehensive financial report. So if we were to, if we were to move in that direction and push out the year-end report, it just means that you would get the information a little bit later, but we'd have more clarity and certainty about the numbers.
Are there often variances between the unaudited numbers and the audited numbers?
There, there are. They're not really, really significant, but just as we were preparing the report, we saw some pretty significant swings, which caused us to rework the numbers in the year-end report a couple of times.
Great, thank you. And then last question, really super grateful for all of the advocacy to Carvajal and to others to try and get that FEMA money for us. I was wondering if you have any information about neighboring communities that filed around the same storm and if they're receiving funds and if they've received more funds or more projects have been obligated? Just kind of a comparison to how are we doing compared to others who experienced the same storm?
Yeah, that's a great question. I have not recently reached out to the county and the other cities, but we were all touching base more regularly early on when things were, there was, there was, we were new to the, the whole reimbursement process outside of COVID. And we're seeing, at that point, I think we were ahead of, a little bit behind where the county was, ahead of where the other cities were. I, I can follow up with them, but I, my guess, based upon just kind of anecdotally what I'm hearing, is that they're probably about at the same place that we are. I don't know about the exact dollar amounts because aside from the county, we sustained the, the highest dollar value worth of damage related to the storm. So it's not really an apples-to-apples comparison, but when we were checking in more regularly about a year ago, we were all kind of in the same boat and submitting a lot of information and not seeing very quick movement on it.
Thanks. Yeah, I know the Naciamente projects have been seeing obligated funds come through, so that's hopeful at least. And I really appreciated you discussing our runway with transit, that we have a, a year. Do we expect, just point of clarity, uninterrupted service for up to a year if for some reason no more funds come in? Or would we expect to see challenges to that service in the interim?
I'm going to phone a friend and
Thank you.
Have mobility services come up and address that.
Is this on? Yep. Good evening, everyone. I'm Jennifer Rice, Deputy Director and Public Works for Mobility Services. And the question, so it, the one-year estimate is full service, but probably more likely if we thought that there would be changes to the funding in the future. We would pretty soon, within the first few months, start looking at how we're either making adjustments to the operation that we have, what funding sources we're looking at, and are there other state funding sources? So, yeah, we probably wouldn't full steam on the one year, but that is how we estimated that one year was the full service that we have now.
Great. Thank you so much. I appreciate the clarification. That's it for now.
Thank you. I always think back to those of us who used to have checkbooks, you know, waiting for February is looking at, making sure all the checks have gone through before you go spend some more money. Councilmember Boswell.
Thank you, thank you staff for the great report. Just a clarification on one of the agenda correspondence items regarding the insurance fund balance. Two, two questions here. So we are below where we'd like to be on the insurance fund, what risk does that present to us? And then secondly, it says in here there's, that staff is working on a multi-year plan, is that something that will come to council or requires council approval?
Yes, so I'll, I'll take that in two parts. So the, the first answer, the answer to the first question is that if we're not fully funding the reserve to the policy level, we run the risk of not being able to cover our claims costs. I, we're not in immediate danger of that, so, you know, we, that's why we're working on a multi-year plan to get it back to where we need it to be. So good news there. As, as for the, the second question, yes, it would likely come back to council because it would mean an allocation to the fund, and so, you know, that would be, at least at the outset, be kind of a one-time thing, so it could be an assigned fund balance, it could be a one-time contribution in the new budget year, there, I think there's a variety of things that we could do to address that.
Do we have an estimated timeframe for when we might see that?
I, I would say we, we should probably, we would probably have additional information available probably by the time we present the second quarter budget report, which would be the next time we have a formal budget discussion with council.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Councilmember Boswell largely asked my question, so I'll just kind of clarify based on something that you said in response. Would, would it be a common recommendation to use unassigned fund balance, like what we'll be looking at in February, to kind of slowly, maybe over a period of years, fill that gap as part of what we do with that, with those unanticipated revenues at the end of the year?
Yeah, yes, I think that unassigned fund balance would be a good option, it just depends on what the other, you know, options may be.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Without any other questions from my colleagues, then I will move forward to public comment. Right now, we have quite a few slips in, I just want to encourage you, if you have a one-minute or a two-minute versus a three, you get to go first, so just FYI. Any public commenters that are one minutes?
No, they're not, they're all three.
All right, here we go.
Okay, so we have 11 speakers, so if you'll line up and be ready to speak when it's your turn, I'm gonna read three off at a time. Leanne Standish, Barbara Bell, John Dunn.
Good evening. I only have 30 minutes. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Leanne Standish, and I'm the Executive Director of the San Luis Obispo Museum of Art. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight about an exciting project, one that the SLoma Board and I are very confident will deliver a big economic and cultural stimulus to our downtown and the entire community. As outlined in the documents we submitted last week, we intend to create a new 24,000 square foot, this is the first time I'm saying this in this kind of arena, so this feels really major, 24,000 square foot museum campus by uniting three neighboring storefronts on Higera Street and linking them to our historic home at 1010 Broad Street. The project, estimated at $20 million, will do much more than simply allow us to exhibit amazing art. It will allow us to expand our education programs for young people and adults. It will allow us to better showcase local artists, and I want to stop here and say, who since 2020 represent 43% of what we've shown in our programs, while also bringing national touring exhibitions to downtown SLoma featuring renowned artists such as Georgia O'Keefe, Claude Monet, and others. And by occupying downtown space that has for many years underperformed, it will allow us to draw tens of thousands of people to the heart of downtown. We conservatively project our economic impact between $4 and $6 million annually. This project is in full alignment with your long-term plans for downtown revitalization and will directly advance the city's major goals for cultural vitality, economic resilience, diversity, equity, and inclusion. I'm proud to report that we have already raised more than $8 million towards the $20 million goal. But we cannot do this alone. Tonight, we respectfully ask the city to invest $2.5 million to help make this once-in-a-generation project a reality. We plan for this project to unfold in two phases. $500,000 from the city this calendar year would enable completion of Phase One, outfitting the museum with the furnishings and equipment needed to welcome students, families, visitors. Importantly, this amount would qualify for matching under the terms of the $2 million grant issued by the Forbes family. Let me say that again. This $500,000 investment would qualify for matching funds from the Forbes family. The remaining $2 million that we're seeking would go towards purchasing, the eventual purchase of the property as a cultural anchor in the downtown. While the current owner of the Higera space is eager to work with us and has been incredibly flexible, we are time limited in making this happen. For that reason, I cannot overstate the importance... Oh, I did it? I missed three?
So close.
Damn it, thank you, have a nice day.
Thank you, you too.
Barbara Bell, John Dunn, and then Bea McCall.
And if you want to line up as Barbara starts getting close to finish, you can make the process even smoother. Thank you.
Good, good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Thank you for the opportunity to share with you. I'm Barbara Bell, the immediate past Chair of SLoma's Board of Directors, and I have the privilege of speaking tonight for the entire board. First, a historical observation, for more than 60 years, each city council, including this one, has made wise investments to strengthen San Luis Obispo's cultural and economic vitality. From Mission Plaza to the Performing Arts Center to the soon-to-open SLoma Rep, you and your predecessors weighed the risks and made sure you were acting on long-held visions fully aligned with community values, long-term planning, and city goals. Each of these transformative projects carried some risk, but each delivered, or will soon deliver, long-lasting benefits that at each turn have improved our community's quality of life. SLoma's planned expansion has been conceived in that tradition. As Leanne noted, this project is in full alignment with your major city goals. And is resonating with donors. Since August, in other words, just ten short weeks ago, generous donors from across the region have pledged more than $8 million, and that momentum is growing every week. With your contribution, we're confident that other donors will be inspired to join hands with you to make this project a reality. Two final points, first, I want to underscore the urgency of the request. We don't have a lot of wiggle room to accomplish this task. The landlord is offering a fair deal, but it has to happen soon. At $2.5 million, the city's investment almost guarantees that we will accomplish the fundraising task. And second, the SLoma Board is fully committed to the hard work of making sure we successfully complete this campaign. Your investment will pay off beginning in just two short years from now. The project will not only boost downtown's economic and social vitality, it will reinforce downtown's historic role as the beating heart of our community and social and cultural life. Together, we can make this extraordinary partnership real, and again, an effective public-private partnership. Shared vision, shared investment, and shared benefit for generations to come. Thank you for considering our request.
Thank you.
Hello. Excuse me, my name is John Dunn. It's a pleasure to be here, and thank you for this opportunity. Hearing the chime, I'm gonna shorten my comments. Within months, we will be opening a brand-new parking facility and breaking ground on a grand new San Luis Obispo Repertory Theater, thanks to wonderful support from the city. All of these things are going to be great additions to the city. All of us want the very best for our downtown, our current community gathering place. As, as the report presented to you demonstrates, the new San Luis Obispo Museum of Art will be an attraction and an enhancement to the downtown, adding to its variety and vitality and economic benefit and better serving our residents and our visitors. So tonight, before you, you have an opportunity, you have a visionary and a solid proposal, which will greatly benefit the arts and cultural opportunities of this community, as well as add to our community's many attractions. Your support and contribution towards this effort will greatly help in accomplishing the twin goals of a beautiful San Luis Obispo Art Museum and a more attractive and healthier downtown. It will also stimulate our own ambitious fundraising effort, which will be, which is already off to a very fast start. So there are only a very few times in our lives when great opportunities arise to move us toward a brighter future. In the years to come, this community and our region will thank you for your faith and your foresight, so thank you very much for your consideration to us. Thank you.
Thank you.
After Bea, it's Missy Reitner, Cameron Clint Pierce, and Amanda Bockelman.
Good evening, Mayor Stewart, councilmembers. Thank you for the opportunity to speak as you consider the year-end budget report. I'm here to ask that the city invest in the expansion of the San Luis Obispo Museum of Art, not only as a cultural enhancement, but as a meaningful advance towards, yes, economic vitality and vibrancy, but also towards equity, inclusion, and belonging in our community. This council and the one before it has made it clear, you care deeply about ensuring everyone feels seen, valued, respected, and like they belong in San Luis Obispo. That commitment is not just a phrase in your vision for the city, it's embedded in the city's diversity, equity, and inclusion major city goal and its intersections, as we can see on the wall. This is not easy work. Belonging requires spaces and experiences where people from every background have access to participate, where our diverse identities are not just celebrated but empowered, and where community is actively being formed. At SLoma, I've witnessed this in practice. Children from all walks of life, laughing and drawing and coloring together, families exploring art that tells the stories of the world, older adults connecting across cultures, it's a dynamic place where art becomes the bridge. The expansion brings that spirit directly downtown tenfold, expanding the heart of our community so that every generation across race, gender, culture, ability, sexual orientation, age, and its intersections can access art, create art, and have their stories be told through art and unequivocally find belonging. By supporting this project now, you affirm that equity in action is a funding priority, that inclusion in action is a budget decision, that belonging is a civic investment. With strong private fundraising already underway, the city's support will maximize impact, leverage partner dollars, and consistently send a clear message. SLoma is a place where diversity is honored, equity is acted upon, and every person belongs. Thank you for your leadership and for believing that our downtown, our institutions, and our future must reflect and welcome all of us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I have to follow that, that's not awesome. Thank you all for taking the time to listen to us and hear what we have to say. As a local artist and arts advocate, I see every day how important SLoma is and how it inspires creativity and sustains artists' livelihoods. From the murals SLoma has been a part of, to the internationally celebrated artists, to Second Saturdays, where kids get to learn a new process of art and they get to take home a free kit, SLoma celebrates art on many levels, and we are a more vibrant community because of it. A museum is a place where artists grow, where kids discover their creative voice, and where visitors see what makes SLoma unique. A place that is open to all, with no barriers to entry, allows everyone the joy of experiencing art. For artists, this expansion means more opportunities to show, sell, and thrive right here at home. It's also vital for artists, and really all people, to see art, new art, different art, art that they just don't, sometimes you get art-blind when you're walking down the street. A lot of you probably don't even see the murals that you've walked by or the sculptures, because you just see it all the time, and it's really important. Exposure to art is good for everybody. Art in a community is also vital for growth, both economically and socially. It strengthens our creative economy and reinforces that SLoma is a place where art and enterprise can go hand in hand. Thank you.
Thank you.
Honorable Mayor and Council, thank you for letting us speak. My name is Clint Pierce, and I'm the Chair of the Facility's Task Force for SLoma. As a new grandparent, I think a lot about what kind of downtown we're building for the next generation or two. Downtowns everywhere are evolving. People need reasons to come, to linger, to feel proud of their city. This museum will be that magnet, drawing people from Grover Beach to Great Britain to experience the heart of San Luis Obispo. It's an investment in our local economy and in the joy of living here. And I can tell you, as the Chair of the Facility's Task Force, this is a very well-thought-out design, it's a high-quality design, and it's very cost-efficient. So I encourage you to partner with SLoma for this wonderful opportunity in our downtown and our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Amanda Bockelman, Charlie Rug, and then Chuck Crotster.
Good evening, Mayor Stewart and City Councilmembers. I've been a teacher in San Luis Coastal since 2010, and I've been bringing groups of students to the art museum regularly throughout that time. And for many of my students, it's their first time experiencing art in a museum up close. For my AP Art History students, who I brought some of them with me here today, I have the privilege of witnessing that growth firsthand, and it goes from me projecting art on the slide projector in my classroom to them really seeing the art, you know, inches away. And when we visited SLoma just about a month ago, they got that experience. We had seen the art beforehand in the classroom, and then they got to see it in real life, and it was just an amazing experience for all of us. And the SLoma Museum of Art is the only really accessible museum for our students in the whole county, and I'm just so excited about the possibilities that await them in this expanded space for students, families, educators, and this investment, it really creates lifelong learners, future leaders, and citizens who are engaged in their community, and I'd like to give the floor to them now.
Hello, my name is Simon Gower, and I'm an art history student at San Luis Obispo High School. So a couple weeks ago, my class and I took a field trip to the SLoma Art Museum, and one of my favorite parts was just engaging and discussing the art with my classmates and teachers, and it was just such an enriching experience to experience like a little slice of culture in San Luis Obispo. However, the museum only had three artists, and we all left wanting more. With a bigger space, the museum will be able to feature a wider variety of classic and contemporary artists, delivering a fuller art experience for students like myself.
I'm Phoebe, I'm also an art history student, and I'm also an artist myself. I love creating, and I love doing art, and seeing artists from our community in the SLoma Art Museum was very empowering for me, and I just think that if it was bigger, more people would be able to have that empowering experience, and I think that's just very important to the art and culture of SLoma, and, yeah.
Hi, I'm Graham, I'm another one of the art students at SLoma High, and I just really want to further what my fellow students have said, where the space they have is amazing, and what they've been able to create in such a limited space really is inspiring, and it's super cool how they're able to bring these, like, pieces of culture into our San Luis Obispo, and I think just an expansion of that space really means a lot to students like us who really appreciate the art that's being put forth, and just to the community as a whole, who can kind of see all the effort that's being put in and experience this culture at such a local level, and I think it's really cool, and it would be really empowering to have this expansion. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good evening. I thought they were asking for like 10 million, so 2.5 sounds like nothing right now.
I thought they were asking for like 10 million, so 2.5 sounds like nothing right now. My name's Charlie Rug. I'm an artist, local artist. First, I'd like to thank you, council members, Mayor, for your thoughtful stewardship of this city, for your ongoing commitment to its arts and culture initiatives. I love this city. I brag about it all the time to outsiders. I'll speak from my experience as an artist here, but also from the heart of a community of artists, students, and neighbors who share this hope for our city's creative future. I've lived in San Luis Obispo a little over eight years now. And for me, life here splits into two chapters: before I discovered the museum and after. When I moved here from Boston, I was starting fresh, almost from nothing. And then I found Sloma. Or maybe more accurately, Sloma's chief curator, Emma Saperstein, found me and invited me to the next opening at the museum. There, I didn't just find an art show, but a whole new world of people, many of whom are now close friends, who made me feel seen, capable, and capable of building a creative life rooted here. I distinctly remember a sense of being welcomed home. Later being invited to exhibit at Sloma in 2023 showed me firsthand what happens when a community gives artists a platform. People discover new worlds, make new connections, and artists are lifted up to uncover more creativity within themselves. For the artists here now and in the future artists to come, this expansion means more access, more visibility, and the message that you don't need to leave San Luis Obispo to pursue a career in the arts with a capital A. You can build one right here. To me, this isn't simply about growth, it's about meeting a moment, acknowledging the momentum that's been building for decades, and saying, yes, this belongs here, this matters here. A city that nurtures its artists nurtures its soul. I'm grateful for the chance to help feed that soul. I'm inspired by what this city is becoming, and I feel incredibly fortunate to be an artist here right now, standing at the doorway of something meaningful for San Luis Obispo. Thank you.
Thank you.
After Chuck is Jeff Toma and then Sarah McGrath. And Sarah is our final speaker.
Honorable Mayor, council members, my name's Chuck Crotzer. I've been in here quite a bit over the years. I'd like to begin by saying that I greatly appreciate the support that Sloma has received previously by the city. And I consider the city to be one of the most important partners that we continue, as we continue on this journey. To save some words, I want to say I fully endorse the detailed requests submitted earlier by Leanne and Armina on behalf of the museum and our supporters. Among a variety of city advisory bodies I've happily served on for many years, I was especially proud to serve on the design team that developed the downtown concept plan, a brainchild of John Donne, by the way. Got to give him a lot of credit. It offered a vision for possibilities within our city core. For me, one of the key elements of this effort was the enhancement of our Culture District on Monterey Street between Choro and Napomo. This was a natural evolution of the Mission Plaza Plan championed by Mayor Ken Schwartz decades ago. The San Luis Obispo Museum of Art has historically been and must continue to be an essential presence. Ideally, the city and Sloma will continue to pursue this shared vision as described in numerous city documents and policies. In my view, this area of the city is the heart and requires special consideration. Others this evening have articulated much better than I the rationale for this important request and timely request. In preparing my few comments this evening, I thought of some meaningful words by Robert Henry. He's a teacher, writer, and artist that I'd like to share, and I hope he can be part of my three minutes here at Big Brief. Robert says, "In America or in any country, greatness in art will not be attained by the possession of canvases. In palatial museums or by the purchase and physically owning of art, the greatness can only come by the art spirit." It's a term that he uses quite often. "Entering into the very life of people, it's not a thing apart, but as the greatest essential of life to each individual..." I'm sorry, I'm skipping, but it is to make every life productive of light. He calls that a spiritual experience. These are pretty lofty words and thoughts. However, they're aspirational, and I think that's as important as any of the rationale that we may have heard otherwise. In terms of the aspirational effect of what he says, in terms of the importance of arts across the breadth of our community, I believe that this spiritual influence, I'll use his words, as well as the cultural and economic benefits of this proposed investment, will bring enormous advantage to our community, our visits, and our future. And I want to thank you again for your prior support, for your extraordinary leadership, and I thought I was going to make it. Thank you very much. Now, I just wanted to say, if you feel the art spirit, let's do this.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Stewart, City Council members, and city staff for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. My name is Jeff Toma. I come to you as a community member, a father, and a business owner in support of the Slow Museum of Art. We're all speaking here today to request your thoughtful review and consideration of the use of city surplus funds to assist Sloma to meet its funding goals for the proposed new art museum downtown. Having been born in San Luis Obispo, it's evident how our city and community has always maintained a pro arts position when considering its economic development and need for a cultural vision. And at the same time, for as long as I can remember, Sloma has had incredible dreams. On a shoestring budget, the museum's leadership has made accessible to our small town some incredible collections that have attracted diverse and culturally significant works of art. Students, visitors, families, and community members do take advantage of the museum's ability to deliver exceptional and high-quality arts programming. And now, the decision before you has the power to dramatically grow the reach of Sloma's impact and ability to bring world-class arts to this community. About two months ago, I had the opportunity to attend an Economic Vision Trip to Madison, Wisconsin, with a cohort of other community members through the Chamber of Commerce. The trip was an incredible insight into a city that is thriving and in many ways resembles San Luis Obispo. The final day of our visit culminated in a tour of a performing and visual arts facility called the Overture Center for the Arts. Located in the immediate vicinity of a state capitol building, historical landmarks, substantial outdoor recreation atop university, the facility itself anchors a hyper-local arts district within the bustling downtown. Does that sound familiar? In visiting the Overture Center, I couldn't help but be inspired about what a similar place could mean for our hometown. This trip redefined to me what I believe to be very possible for our community. Reaching thousands of local children on a yearly basis to translate arts exposure to well-rounded, positive academic outcomes and emotional development, being a center for inspiration and self-reflection, or a meeting place for coffee and connection, we have a tremendous opportunity to capitalize on years of planning and build a win-win partnership that is congruous to our own city's vision. I believe the decision you have before you tonight represents an opportunity to take the arts in our community a giant leap forward and inspire the next generation of San Luis Obispoans. The decision is important, it's impactful, it's inspirational. Let's not let this opportunity slip between our fingers. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak before you this evening, and am so thankful for your thoughtful deliberation.
Thank you.
My name is Sarah McGrath. I'm here with my husband, Pedro Arias Lopez, and my son, Liam Arias McGrath. Mayor Stewart and council members, San Luis Obispo is a more diverse, inclusive, and vibrant community as each year goes by, thanks to the work of so many. Thank you for all that you do for our city. Our family is here representing several viewpoints. As a family, our kids are teens now. We've been going to Sloma openings and Second Saturdays for years now because Sloma is fun and it's interactive, and we miss having there be enough space for actual classes. As relatively new business owners in downtown, our success depends on a bustling and thriving downtown, and we talk up Sloma to everybody. We talk about it to tourists, to the participating young artists who hang their work at our café, and also to the locals. We believe our downtown rocks. And also, in my other job as a service coordinator supporting families of children with disabilities, I often talk about the opportunity to see world-class, interesting, make-you-think art right here in our downtown for free. We know, especially as business owners, how important it is to jump at opportunities when they come, when the timing is right. I'm Sloma's number-one fan, well, maybe not the only number-one fan, but one of them. And I'm thrilled at the idea of growth and expansion, and I hope that you are too. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a final speaker?
That was our final speaker.
Okay. Well, thank you for all of the public comment, all of the input. We really appreciate your time. With that, we'll head back to our budget. One thing that I guess I want to make sure that people that might be at home thinking, wow, wait, I had a moment to ask for money? Today is not the day that we're actually giving out and appropriating money. So I just want to make sure everyone knows this is happening in February as a potential after our audited financials. So just want to say that one more time out loud, just in case that wasn't clear, and we'll go back from there. Just wanted to make sure, from public comment or anything else, did you have anything else to add, Riley or Emily, or City Manager, for our continued conversation?
I think perhaps I would just make sure that folks are aware that we did review the proposal and the request in detail and have been working with Sloma, both on the concepts that are presented for funding, but also on the development of their project as a whole. So obviously, we have a whole team of people who review plans and entitlements that will be needed, and so we are continuing to work through all of those efforts, understanding the timelines that they're approaching, and really looking at this as something that, of course, on our staff side are fully supportive of assisting them through that process. We also prepared a staff agenda correspondence, providing a little bit of additional background on the request, including citations to some of those places in our existing plans and policies that do really speak to an asset like this in our downtown, and the support for cultural arts in our community, and in particular, in our Cultural Arts District and our downtown core. And so there are a lot of alignments, as mentioned, for a facility like this and for expansion of the museum. And the staff agenda correspondence then provides a little bit of, if we were given direction to pursue a funding of some sort, we would recommend developing a grant agreement and making sure that we worked through a number of potential terms for that grant agreement and then bringing that back. Again, our recommendation is to bring it back, really as part of that second-quarter budget report. And we're here and happy to talk through options on if council's interested in directing us to move forward with that, what that might look like in terms of actual dollar amounts funded. We know, given, kind of kicked off the conversation with that idea in mind of our identified structural budget deficit that we had discussed previously, and where we're at, knowing that it's a less concerning or severe outlook at this point, but also understanding that there are, again, lots of needs, and I think our Finance Director mentioned that as well, with even an insurance fund questions. We do have a policy around, it gives general direction on use of year-end money, really prioritizing our CalPERS additional payments, infrastructure, and health and safety needs in the community. And we have also made allocations of year-end funding for things like the Slow Rep needs and buildings. So we're really here to just help council through the consideration and provide options if you want to talk through how we might, from a practical and logistical standpoint, bring that forward, and then if you have questions about funding, including for other kind of questions, concerns that might be on your mind about needs in the community. So we're just really here to assist, and really want to thank Sloma and everyone who came to speak in support of the project. The work that the museum does is truly a community benefit, and so we're happy to help work through next steps. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and thank you to Deputy City Manager Herman for the report that was very, or the agenda correspondence that was very helpful. I think that one thing that I heard through a lot of the comments and we have in our major city goals is the cultural and economic development of our community. I also really appreciated one of the speakers talking about the downtown concept plan. We have a lot of vision in this community, and that's been brought together from multiple council members and community leaders and business leaders and everyone together. And so I just appreciate that because sometimes people think we're making a decision that's just last minute, and this is truly part of a longer-term vision. I also want to really appreciate everyone coming today. While, granted, I wish it was a year ago when we were doing budget decisions, things happen and things land in your lap and you got to move forward. So while we don't move fast, we definitely move with thoughtful discussion and plans. So with that, Councilmember Marks.
Thank you. Yeah, I really heard all the public comment, and I agree that the cultural vitality of the downtown and also the Cultural Arts District, and we've been named our parking structure after that, you know? So I was happy to hear that the facility in 1010 Broad Street is going to remain activated. I would be concerned if it just turned into an office space or just a classroom space. I think it needs also to be a gallery space to continue the very important activation and interaction with the Mission, the History Museum, the Children's Museum, Slow Rep. It's like there's a little synergy over there in that district, so I want to keep that up. So I basically am really intrigued and happy to see this opportunity come up. I'm concerned about the timing, the sense of urgency that I heard from the public. And I guess my question in terms of options or terms of a potential grant agreement would be, how could we, in some way, respond to the urgency of the timing in terms of the purchase of the building, and at the same time, not disrupt our thoughtful and deliberate budget process, which we're all dedicated to? So I'd like to hear perhaps some more from the staff.
Thank you, City Manager.
Thank you, Sherthing. Happy to jump in on that. We have been in discussions with leadership from the museum on the level of commitment that would help them with, in particular, the matching grant component of what they're looking at this evening. I believe that if there was a direction to staff with a stated commitment to a certain amount of funding, that that could suffice for the matching grant purposes, even if we don't have a penned agreement by the end of the year. I have concerns also about our logistical ability to get an agreement completed before the end of the year and before the city council for approval. We do have one meeting in December, and so that end of the spectrum as well, on top of the desire for us to not be making appropriations from fund balance until our mid-year. I do believe if there is that stated commitment and direction to us, we would go off and work on the grant agreement with the direction on the funding amounts and any additional terms that you'd want to see in there. So I'm happy to dig into anything else as well.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. That helps a little bit, but I do want to clarify. So are you saying that you could envision a process where we sort of make a commitment to... to fund at some level? Maybe the number isn't known at this moment, but to fund at some level or to pledge funding at some level, so that you could start going forward with working on a grant agreement? And then sort of put in the number later when we have that meeting in February?
I do think that if there's an interest in helping them meet the grant agreement, I mean, the matching grant challenge, essentially the grant challenge, we would need to state that dollar amount. And so what they've requested is half a million now, essentially, to help them meet that matching grant, which they would use toward furnishings in the first phase of their project. And then they've requested $2 million be granted to assist them in purchasing the building in the second phase of the project. So I don't think the actual money is needed until that second phase is completed. I believe they're looking at potentially like a three- or maybe even four-year timeframe for needing essentially the cash in hand to help them exercise an option to purchase the building. So it's really kind of comfort level on the commitment to funding for that first phase that would help them with the matching grant, and then comfort level on commitments to funding for that request for funding for the purchase of the building at the end.
So the real question, the real immediate question is, do we have a comfort level with pledging a half a million dollars and staff time, basically, to work towards a grant agreement with potentially additional funding coming later?
That's correct. There's certainly that component, and I know that they are working very earnestly on raising the remainder of the funding that they need and making sure that the decision to move forward with the lease agreement and the next steps with the building itself, they need to make sure that they have enough funding lined up with pledges and commitments from all sources. So they're requesting the full amount at this point to help them make sure that they can actually carry through on the overall vision. So I think the urgency, I'm sure, and I'm sure they'd be happy to speak more to that, but there is a sense of urgency on both fronts. There is a greater deadline with the end of the year for the matching grant.
Thank you. Councilmember Boswell.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. First of all, do we know for the second phase of funding, the $2 million, do we know an anticipated date for when that request would come in or when that funding would be anticipated? What budget year?
I believe it's tied to when the option to purchase would become active, essentially, and available to them. So they're looking at, I believe, January of '26 as maybe the earliest. But hopefully, I could definitely be wrong on that, and that's mostly from my understanding, which is looking slightly through a pinhole. So we could probably, I would recommend getting a confirmation on that, but I believe...
Should we phone a friend?
Yes.
Thank you.
That'd be great.
Since we have the Executive Director of SLoma here.
Hi. Our purchase option becomes available in 2028. Should I stay? I'd like to stay. I think we're good right now.
So that's when the funding would be needed, is in 2028?
That's right.
My second question, it's really a follow-up on the previous questions, probably for the City Manager. Could we direct an amount and then an up to an additional amount? Could we say, well, we can confirm this amount, but we would be willing to consider an additional amount up to X? Would you be able, because I know part of the issue is you want to be able to negotiate this agreement. So if we gave you that kind of direction, could you negotiate an agreement effectively? Or do you need us to say, this is the amount?
So certainly, if that's what the council is comfortable with, is giving us an amount and an up-to amount, I think in terms of the agreement itself, the challenge we'll have is, what are the parameters for confirming that up-to number? So if it's, let's say, we want to confirm that our year-end audited report comes in within a margin of error of what we've reported, and maybe that's the only concern or issue, we could definitely confirm that on staff end and bring back a fully baked agreement that has a dollar amount in it, I believe, that we should be okay. But it might leave us in a position of doing some negotiating like this right now in open, which is a lot of, you know, we end up doing that work from time to time, as it is. And so it's certainly something we would work with, and I think the question would just be, what are the, what is the information and issues that you need to know and that we would need to know to confirm and nail down an actual dollar amount? And I do apologize on that date being wrong. I read it as, it's three years from January of '26, which obviously gets you, but we had the source. Should have phoned a friend earlier. Thank you.
Are we just doing questions now? Or...
I think questions, unless all the questions are done, and then we come back to deliberation.
I'm good with questions.
But we are good with public comment at this point. Vice Mayor.
I have no further questions. I was going to start deliberation, so if anybody else has questions first, you do.
I believe Councilmember Francis does.
Yeah, since we're talking about appropriations, I'll go slightly off-topic for a moment. You had sent out an agenda correspondence on potentially earmarking some funds for the rental registry, since we'll be having that discussion in February. And I just wanted to confirm that the amount that we think, there were kind of two different buckets in there. There was the startup, and then there was the continuing costs. And I wanted to confirm that what we'd be looking at is that potential startup cost, which was around $300,000. Is that correct?
Thank you. Just to clarify, that was information shared just by email with council, which is, you know, public information. We didn't put it in an agenda correspondence. So if anybody is looking furiously for where that is, it's not there right now. Although I do believe a lot of the information, or at least some rough numbers, were included in the staff report from our study session at our last meeting. The $300,000 for the startup cost includes technology and a new position. So the issue there is that we can't, yes, we don't have a source of funding identified for an ongoing position, but the technology is easy to deal with on a one-time basis.
And the rental registry will be a study session in February, not a voting item, where the budget will be a voting item.
Right. But if there's momentum behind it in February, then potentially having funds earmarked that could be utilized, is that realistic to look for, you know, being able to get that started?
I do think if that's the direction that we do receive, then year-end money is places we have looked in the past for funding efforts like this, with, again, the challenge being the ongoing funding source that we haven't identified for adding a position.
But this could be something that's earmarked and then pending council direction then in February?
I think that's, I think during the study session on the rental registries, you can certainly give us that direction. But the actual appropriations, as the mayor mentioned, wouldn't come until the second quarter report, which I believe is the next meeting. I mean, yes.
So no direction on that today, just sort of putting it out into the ether that, consider. Right. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Get ready for this. Not too long, I hope. So first of all, thank you, everybody, for all of the super thoughtful comments. The passion and emotion behind your words and your support for SLoma is just super heartwarming. I think, as you all alluded to, clearly, arts is important to this community. We have a long history in this city of supporting SLoma in particular, but SlowRep has been another recent big investment. We provide funding every year to SLoma and are super happy to have that partnership to bring most of the beautiful public art that you see around the city into the city. And even as I sit here, as all of the public commentators are coming up to the mic, we have on the back wall, you know, public art from around the city, including some of the pieces that we have worked with SLoma to bring into the community. So I just want to express my full emotional support for the work that SLoma does and am so grateful that they are here to bring beauty into our community every single day and in all parts of our city and especially downtown. I think where this gets really tough is that we have limited funds, and it's, we want to do so much. We have lots of huge goals as a city. We have a strong record of supporting the arts, but we also have a strong record of fiscal responsibility and making sure that we have our audit numbers correct and that we know exactly how much we have at the end of the year to spend on one-time projects. End-of-the-year fund balance is definitely good for one-time projects like this, so it gets really hard at this stage where we don't know what our actual numbers are going to be and what other things we will have identified through this process that we actually need to spend money on too. Plus, as staff has said, we have policy priorities that are well-established, that we provide first and foremost for additional CalPERS payments to support our unfunded pension liability, infrastructure investments, and then emerging health and safety needs. So it's hard at this point to start talking about really concrete numbers when we think we have 4.1 million to work with, but we're not sure yet because those numbers aren't confirmed, and we don't know what else is going to come our way and that we're going to need to spend money on. So I've been thinking about this a lot, and I think I am comfortable knowing that we have 4.1 million-ish committing to that first $500,000. I think that will be an important boost to their fundraising efforts. I think others that are considering donating to this project need to know that the city is behind it. I know that they are looking for other donors in other organizations and individuals that just having that city buy-in to the first $500,000 would go a long way to helping them boost their fundraising efforts, because, let's be honest, none of us have $20 million just laying around, and this is going to take a village. And so in order to help get them started on this effort, I feel safe enough, even as I'm sitting here shaking, thinking about dedicating a pledge like that, to making that pledge and asking staff to work on the particulars of a grant agreement. What I'm not sure about, and I'm curious to hear what the others think, is if you all are thinking that a bigger number is necessary at this point. I think right now, I would personally rather wait till we have the actual numbers a little more concrete and know what other things we have urgently on the horizon. I know, as City Manager McDonald said, staff are going into two days of budget cut discussions, which I know from personal experience is a very difficult task, and I want to make sure that they have the support and time that they need to look at that and see how that might, this is one-time funding, so I would hope that that wouldn't necessarily impact our unassigned fund balance, but just want them to know that they have the space to do that process in a thoughtful way. So I'll stop there, but I'm curious to hear what others are thinking.
Thank you. Councilmember Boswell.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. First of all, I want to say congrats to SLoma for a visionary project. I really like that it's more than an art museum, that it's really a community hub and resource and many other things. And I also want to thank the speakers tonight and the email correspondence we got, because it's always heartening to see these strong expressions of civic pride in the community. As council members, we often are reading lots of email complaining about things. And so when we hear civic pride, which I have an incredible amount of civic pride for this community, it always makes me feel good. I do think this project, I do want to set aside the $2 million request. I think that's a large number, and I think it's something we have to talk about as part of a larger budget cycle. So my focus is on this first-phase request, which is the half million. I do believe I can support some portion of that request. I'm not sure if I can support $500,000. And let me explain a little bit of my thinking on this. And it is why I asked whether we could make a baseline commitment with a potential to consider additional fundings when we come back in February. But I want to explain my thinking on this a little bit. There's a few things, I think, questions I need answered or additional things that need to be considered before making, before agreeing to a request of this size. First, I think we do need to see some details of the agreement and a more detailed staff report. We got a, you know, we got a quick staff report in response to the agenda correspondence, but for allocations of this size, I think we need a more detailed staff report, the details out, you know, the larger financial implications, looks at a project like this as an investment, and then details out what an agreement would look like. I also think we need an opportunity for the public to weigh in on this matter. So this, you know, this is advertised in our agenda as a receive-and-file item, and so a public, member of the public, reading this agenda item might simply believe we're getting a report on a budget, and that's the end of that. On we move. And so I think it would need a clear agenda item so the public understands that a change to our budget is being considered. We do considerable, I mean, it's our biggest public engagement for anything we do is around our budget and how we allocate our dollars. And so I think we need to continue that pattern of ensuring the public has as much opportunity to weigh in on significant budget decisions as possible. Obviously, we need our final audited number. Hopefully, it won't change much, but these days, uncertainty seems to be the name of the game, so, but hopefully, that'll work out well. I think by February as well, we'll have a better sense of our budget situation for our current fiscal year, which I remain concerned about, even though I guess things are maybe looking a little better than what we anticipated, but still anticipating the potential for budget cuts next year. And then the final thing I want to mention is that, you know, for me, I have to, as much as I'm excited and encouraged about this proposal, I have to consider this in the larger consideration of other potential financial commitments, including the additional CalPERS payment, the possible work we've started on rental protection and new costs that might be associated with that, and the fact that we have a $700 million, 10-year capital improvements program that delays many projects that we thought we'd be getting sooner to later. And there's many advocates out there for those projects as well, whether they be parks, transportation, infrastructure, public works efforts, and the like. Lots of requests out there to move projects sooner rather than later on our 10-year agenda. And so I want to be able to spend some more time to consider this project in light of the possible other projects that are out there that could contend for this kind of So again, just to sort of summarize where I think I am currently, which is, I do want to support some funding, a number that can at least help with the match. And I'm willing to consider talking about whether we provide direction for an up-to, but be clear that that's not a commitment, and that's pending additional information from staff and a review in February. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Marks.
Thank you. Well, and I want to thank everyone who's spoken so already. Well, and I want to thank everyone who's spoken so already. And I, I basically, I feel, I would feel comfortable committing or have directing staff to commit to the $500,000 that's been requested for the matching grant in that, that phase, partly because I can see it could really inspire a lot more private donors coming in. I do not feel comfortable at this point about allocating or directing staff to make a future allocation of $2 million. That's just too much money for me to, like, it's just too abstract. I agree with what Councilmember Boswell was saying, that we definitely need an agenda item where this is posted, where people, the general public can comment on that. Also, the $2 million figure itself seems, so far, from what I've learned, and I'd like to know more, is somewhat arbitrary. Why not 3 million? Why not 1 million? Why not 5 million? It's like, it's, it's the request that they've made, but I don't understand the factual basis for making that particular dollar amount. Also, the fact that it's, we're talking about a purchase option in 2028. While I wish the, the project well, and I, I'm, have a lot of confidence it'll be carried out as is envisioned, at the same time, a lot of stuff can happen between 2026 and 2028. And so to me, the, this is really something that has to be negotiated carefully with benchmarks and sort of mileposts or whatever we call them, but, you know, just figuring out exactly what kind of reassurance the city would want to have before making that commitment. I do, I do feel somewhat crazy about even, although I said I'd support the 500,000, we need the audited figure so that we know the, the actual reality we're talking about. And the other priorities, the competing priorities that we know about, the CalPERS, getting the rental registry going and launching that, that is a very important, also major city goal. If you look at all of our major city goals, you know, there's also, we're not getting reimbursed by FEMA, that's a huge deal. The shortfall there, as the CIP, we're going to be talking about the Prado overpass later on this evening. There's just a lot of competition for these very precious dollars. So I'd like to direct staff to go ahead and negotiate the grant agreement with the direction to commit to the 500,000 as per the matching grant and then work out in a great amount of detail the possibility of larger city support, larger donations in, in the future, also with the timeline there and some protections built in, including making sure that the 10, 10 Broad Street facility in terms of the plan is that, that is still an active part of our cultural arts district. So I'll stop right there.
Thank you. Councilmember Francis.
Yeah, thank you so much. I, like many of you out here, could not be more excited for this project. I am a total sucker for these renderings. I spent a lot of time sort of fantasizing about walking through the museum and then hanging out by the creekside. And I just think it's, it's a really cool way of using that, that space and just a really smart way of thinking about downtown. I think several people talked about, you know, downtowns are evolving. I just think this is, on all fronts, a really fantastic project. And, and yet, as we've talked about here, there's, you know, some tricky timing here. We have structural budget deficits. We have uncertain future that a lot of you guys know we can't really plan for. So we're kind of balancing hope and aspiration with kind of thoughtful pragmatism, which is a really tricky thing to do. And I appreciate a lot of you talking about needing some additional time for outreach and deliberation, especially on the, the big number. So I'm, I'm glad to maybe just settle on separating this into two buckets, that tonight, maybe we're talking about that first allotment and I'm comfortable thinking about that here and now, and then maybe having discussions about that, that second allotment when we have a clearer idea of, of the future. You know, we had, a week ago, 100-plus people in this room, you know, talking to us about wanting additional protections for, for renters. We have this week staff discussions around potential cuts. And it just would feel really like a betrayal of all of these different folks if we just kind of stuffed all of that money into one bucket right now. So I want to make sure that we're moving pretty cautiously here. I am willing to kind of discuss what that first allotment looks like. I'm hearing maybe some balance from one of you and maybe 500 from the other two and kind of curious to see where the, the mayor lands and maybe we can kind of talk through what that number looks like.
Nice. Thank you. Thank you for all of your, your deliberation. I really appreciate the thoughts. And I thank so many people here in the community, as well as people who have emailed us. And as I always like to remind our listeners, we do hear you, we do read the emails, and there's so much support and I love that. Also, just have to first say congratulations on the $8 million raise. That's amazing. You're almost at half. And plus, if we can help you with that, achieve that challenge grant, you would be well over half, half the money raised, and that is awesome. I personally am supportive of the 500,000. One, because it's one-time funding and two, because we could help exponentially with raising that funding through private donors. And I think that is a leverage that is necessary. I think at the same time, 100% what Councilmember Mark said, yeah, I need to make sure all the checks have been cleared. I'm very much, I sit in the meetings with our auditors and I want to make sure everything has gone through and is correct before we actually sign over anything. So that is, that is very important. As far as the downtown and almost seeing this money come back to us so quickly through revenue, yes, we just saw that sales tax and TOT is, tourism funding is coming to us even better than we expected, which is fabulous. That is what's making us not have to talk about reductions to a higher percentage than we expected literally up until about, I don't know, a week ago. So I really think that is fantastic. And we are in, stated already by our finance director, a record that we never wished to be in, which is the largest, longest shutdown federally. And so we're looking at, okay, after one year, can we fully fund our transit? What are we looking at? We're looking at every part of main securities of people, you know, your food, your housing, your, how do you get somewhere to work and childcare, et cetera. So we are also looking at that. And we're looking at, financially, everything comes in more expensive. That's no question. Our Rigetti Park or Emerson Park or Prado, I mean, we could just go down the list of the CIP. But I also look at this as, we're not looking at something that is a $50 million project that may go even longer with construction and what does that look like? We're looking with a lease with option to buy. And that is something that I think has a different feel to it for me than any of the other projects we've been looking at. So I do feel that I want to separate those two buckets as well, but it does give me hope to say that there's a possibility of that money in the future. But without having public comment on this for the entire community who understands this is even a possibility, I think we have to, we have to look at that. We can't just say, well, here we go. There, there was no expectation, no outreach. We've received some comments already on concerns about outreach. And I think one of the challenges we all have is the, I don't think it's probably millions, but thousands and thousands and thousands of channels that everyone looks at, whether it's social media, radio, TV, streaming, et cetera. And it's really hard to get into people's ears and eyes. So really helping people understand that this is a possibility is, is important to understand. And for us as a public entity, outreach is key. So if we cannot get to more people that, and to help them understand where our budget is and what's possible, that's really important. And that's for all parts of our budget. Looks like we have some ambassadors in the room and on our computers, so I hope that those ambassadors will help us get the word out as we continue with outreach and on this project. So to me, I will just say that I would like to see us commit to that 500,000 after we see our unaudited dollars coming through, unaudited budget coming through. And so what that looks like in the future, I leave that into the city manager's hands and the rest of staff as far as negotiations and what that would look like with a grant agreement. As far as the 2 million, yes, that's a, that's a future conversation that hopefully we'll have before January 28th that the whole community can be part of. We'd have a full analysis from the staff and our typical staff reports and go from there. So that's my two cents. And I saw some hands going up on the microphones, but the hands going back down. Okay, all right. Okay, perfect. So with that, we are kind of in a receive and file, but also with an additional change to that motion of receive and file to, we'd like staff to look a little bit further into how do we help with this challenge grant? How do we show our, I guess not ours, the Sloma's grantor, that we are truly behind this project and would like to support in some way possible? Councilmember Marks.
Yeah, I thought I heard that staff had prepared a slide on a possible, is that incorrect? No? Okay. So do you feel you have enough direction from council at this point or are there?
I think, I think it would be helpful to have a motion. That will help staff, but I believe it may also help the museum with the challenge grant. And so I do have an idea of some language in case that helps, although I'm happy to read that now, but I can wait and if we want to hear from others first.
We have a couple more commenters up here, so.
Yeah. Well, yeah, I'd like to hear that language. Otherwise, I'll have to try to put it together, so.
Well, let's have the comments from councilmembers Francis and the Vice Mayor, and then we'll come back to that wording that we would so enjoy to hear. Councilmember Francis.
Yeah, apologies, a question, just follow up on what the, the grant agreement, kind of the, the pieces of the negotiation there. Do you need direction on, I heard from some folks, they were really interested in making sure that we nailed down what's happening with the Broad Street property. I know there was discussions about potential community entry fees or those types of things. I don't, I don't know if you need direction on the specifics here.
So I, I think that if there is very specific things that you would like to see us include that would be helpful. We did, in the agenda correspondence, provide kind of an outline of the terms. It's straddling pages three and four of that agenda correspondence. So I would recommend that we include at least these, but if there are other things that you want to be more specific about, any of that feedback or even inclusion in the motion itself would be really helpful.
Great. So that outline's sufficient unless there are additional things that we need to.
That's right.
Fantastic. And just kind of throwing back a question to you all, just wondering where everybody's falling on the amount that they feel comfortable with and tonight.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
To your first question, I, I think I'm still pretty comfortable with the $500,000, knowing what our anticipated-ish amount is. It would be about a sixth of what we would have left if we dedicated at that time in February, an extra .9 to get our pension amount up. To get our, our pension contribution up to the amount that we need to cover increases that have happened in staffing costs. So I feel like that's a pretty safe amount in my mind. My question that I was going to ask, actually, so two other things with regard to the grant agreement. I seem to remember that in our agreement with SlowRep, we had some clauses or some language around our contribution being last money in, first out, that type of thing. And I don't know if they happen to be wildly successful in their fundraising and raise way more money than they need, that that might be a way that we would be able to have money returned to the city for our other needs. I don't know if that's relevant in this particular situation. It is a different situation than SlowRep, but I just wanted to throw that out there for the sake of discussion and staff consideration. And then the last thing that I wanted to address was Councilmember Boswell's concern about they're not, this being seeming a relatively simple benign item tonight of just, just receiving and filing a fourth quarter budget report and now all of a sudden, maybe it might look like we're committing or changing our budget. And I just want, I guess it's partially a question to the city manager. This is a pledge at this point. It's not, it's not a, a signing on the, signing on the red line with a commitment if, not that anybody would want this to happen, but if we came back at mid-year and there was a dramatic shift that was needed and we needed this money for something else, that could be a thing that we did. This is a, a pledge with some direction to, to, to staff to work on a grant agreement and that's it. Am I correct or?
We would not be appropriating the funding, so it will remain where it is in our fund balance in the general fund. I think that in order for the, the pledge to truly be that, I mean, I'm, I'm assuming it is a commitment subject to our ability to complete a grant agreement. And I would say the audit result is probably another thing we'd want to put in there. So I don't know if that's a good segue at this point into some of the language that, for consideration or.
I have one question before we get there. I asked the finance manager to put up the slide of this preliminary unaudited fund balance. With the CalPERS and the additional funding, is that in the committed and assigned amount already?
The, I, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you.
The committed and assigned line includes a $2 million additional discretionary payment.
Right. And so I just wanted to make sure, because we were kind of talking up here about, well, should we include that? Should we not? It's included in the committed and assigned, so we're not worried about taking the.
Not the additional.
True. Okay. Okay. Just, okay. Just want to make sure we're talking about the, like, it's not that we're not doing an additional. We still would be doing an additional even beyond our normal CalPERS payment. And in addition, we haven't had this conversation yet because we're not there yet, but there's been some interesting aspects of CalPERS as to how much they want us to pay in the future and maybe less. So I just feel like we have a lot of conversations we, we can't have today because we don't have all the information. And so that's part of why we say this is a pledge and it's not an actual appropriation because we need some additional knowledge. But, so that's why I just want to make sure that we know that that $2 million is not part of that 4.1. All right. Thank you. So city manager, yes, we would love to see or hear that wording.
Okay, great. So the, the motion could be to direct staff to incorporate an assignment of $500,000 of year-end fund balance in our future second quarter budget report to support Phase One of the Sloma Expansion Project, subject to the completed audit and a grant agreement to be approved by the city council. I guess the next question for you all is if you would like to also include to, in that, a direction to staff to provide an analysis and a staff report to also be presented in February of options for potentially funding of Phase Two. So I'm happy to take direction either way.
I personally am not looking. I personally am not looking for the Phase Two in February, or March, sorry, for the timing that, I feel like that is a, since it's for January 28th, that is very well into the future conversations of our budget. Vice Mayor.
I would be content with the first part of the motion, if it were me making the motion, which I can do if we're ready.
I have councilmember Marks.
Yeah, I would, I would feel comfortable with that language of incorporating an assignment of the $500,000. But also, I'd like to see staff actually get into trying to negotiate an, an agreement, a grant agreement for the larger amount with the understanding that we can't, we could not, we're just not able to commit to that at this point. And so to, to build in kind of a timeline, which staff knows about and I don't, but you know, in terms of the different benchmarks for the budget process, at some point, we'll be able to have all the facts we need to decide, can we, in, in, in all good faith, allocate that $2 million or whatever the appropriate amount might be? But right now, I, I don't, I don't think we can do it. So is that enough, enough direction to start negotiating with the goal of some kind of future allocation of the larger amount?
I do think if that was the motion that carried, what we would do is work to incorporate into the grant agreement provisions for fu- future support toward Phase Two at certain milestones, including considerations of our normal budget process. I think that's the way.
That would work for me.
Working that in.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor.
I'm sorry, I'm not sure I'm following the, the second part, the new addition.
Happy to, I think it does take a few different ways of phrasing it. I think it makes sense. So the grant agreement would address the need for the $500,000 for first, for this first phase, and also include some terms that would commit the city to providing funding of some kind toward Phase Two with, without stating a specific dollar amount at that point in time, but at least committing to doing the analysis and the, the funding allocations at future budget cycles. So when we are otherwise considering our budget. Does that make, does that help?
Vice Mayor.
So future budget cycles, but not necessarily in February. At some point in the future.
So the agreement could have a provision with the commitment that we will look at fun, providing funding for the Phase Two when we're otherwise dealing with our budget. So not necessarily in February. It could be with our supplement, which comes in June, or the next mid-year, or the next financial plan, essentially. Those are our timeframes.
I'm comfortable with that. I just didn't want to commit us to February since we don't. Too many unknowns still.
Makes sense. Thank you. Councilmember Frances.
Yeah, I think simultaneously, nervously, and enthusiastically, and in support of moving ahead with the motion as it's been stated. And I like the addition of the language to at least start to do the analysis so that we can really have time to digest and include the public in the process.
Thank you. Weirdly, take a long time to digest, process, and also be nimble later. Right? Yeah, okay. Well, with that, I believe, Vice Mayor, I heard you were ready to make the motion.
I will make that motion as so ably stated by our city manager.
Wonderful, I will second. City clerk, can we have roll call? Oh, sorry, there's one more. Councilmember Boswell, sorry.
Yeah, I, I still remain concerned about the, this amount limiting our flexibility and options come February, particularly given our other budget demands, ever I can vote count, and also given the issue of the matching fund and the message sending to the donors. I'm gonna vote yes, so that we have a unanimous vote on this, so that SLoma can use that in their fundraising effort. Thank you.
Thank you, and we hear you. There's, there's definitely concern, that's why it's tied to the unaudited budget. Thank you, appreciate it. City clerk, can we have roll call?
Vice Mayor Shoresman?
Yes.
Mayor Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember Boswell?
Yes.
Councilmember Frances?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
And the motion passes 5-0. Thank you for all of the wordsmithing and updating. Thank you, Riley and Emily, for the really thorough report, and thank you to my colleagues, and congratulations to SLoma. I hope this helps you be able to raise lots and lots of funding so that we can have a wonderful place downtown. And with that, we're gonna take a break. We'll see you back at about 8:15. Well, welcome back, thank you so much. Room is a little echoing now, but it's okay. We are talking about many more millions of dollars in this next session. So I am going to pass it over to Assistant City Manager to introduce the Prado Interchange and Bridge Value Engineering, trying to decrease our dollars and still provide smooth ways across the town and increase safety.
Just did my introduction. Good evening, Assistant City Manager Scott Collins. This is a follow-up item to a conversation council had in February of this year on the Prado Interchange project, where council approved moving forward with a design contract with Consoor. We heard loud and clear in that discussion with city council that the need to both identify regional, state, and federal funding, and where possible, to reduce project costs. So tonight, we are happy to present a value engineering analysis recommendations for the Prado Interchange project. Thanks to the hard work and ingenuity from the team I'm about to introduce, we are presenting council with a project recommendation that provides for much-needed east-west vehicular and protected pedestrian bicycle connections and crossings over Highway 101, all at a reduced cost to the community. So I would like to introduce our presenters, Matt Horn, the city's major project manager, and Brent Lemon, our executive vice president of Consoor. Also in the audience, we have Jennifer Rice, deputy public works director of mobility, Brian Nelson, our city engineer, Luke Schwartz, our transportation manager. I also believe, we have Paul Valdeo, project manager for Caltrans. And I'd also like to thank our police and fire teams for reviewing the various alternatives. Before turning it over to the presenters, I also want to thank the Active Transportation Commission for reviewing the staff recommendations and providing the recommendations on this item at a special ATC meeting last month. Staff has provided some clarifications with regard to the ATC recommendations that were included in the staff report for this item, and those will be discussed in the presentation tonight. So with that, I'll turn it over to Matt Horn. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, members of council, thank you so much for having me tonight. I have, we have about 30 slides we want to go through. There's some great photos, and I want to walk you through some of the work that we've done to date. And one of our, one of our initial photos we have around the screen right here is an image of what the Prado Interchange might look like in the future. You'll see US 101, northbound and southbound, on your screen, we'll have Prado Road going over the top of US 101. You probably see the Sunset Drive-In over here, our city's corporation yard. You'll see that everything is lifted above grade. First, first, before we start, first things first, before we jump into the, the details of what we're talking about tonight, we probably will use some acronyms. We're gonna try not to, but one of the things we're talking a lot about is bike paths, and there are four kind of different segments or types or classifications of bike paths. I want to go through this really quickly. So Class 1 Bike Path, you'll see it on the top of your screen right here. Generally, it's a shared use path that's separated from vehicles. It supports both directional travel for both bike and pedestrian. Our Class 2 facilities are generally in the roadway, they're, they're painted spaces in the roadway prism, either buffered or not buffered, that provide a designated spot for, for bicycles. Class 3 Lanes is a facility that both vehicles and bikes share the same space at the same time, well, not really not at the same time, but at different times, but the same space. And then, of course, Class 4 are the newer versions of bike lanes that we have. They're, they're directional, they're protected, they're usually lifted up or have a barrier in front of them in some ways. So we would be using Class 1, Class 1 quite a bit, our shared use path, and then the Class 4 or the directional protected bike lanes quite a bit. Not so much on the Class 3, but the Class 2s will also be speaking, speaking about a little bit as well. So just to orient everyone to where we're at in, in the world, over on the left-hand side, actually, let me start with US 101, right through the middle right here. On the left-hand side, you'll see San Luis Ranch's recent development and the roundabout that was installed at Froome Ranch in Delidio. You'll see our existing Elks Lane coming down here, our northbound on and off ramp for US 101, the RTA facility, the drive-in, and of course, the corporation yard. A couple waypoints you might want to kind of put in the back of your head is this roundabout over here, but we'll use that for orientation in the future. We'll use this location right here, we're calling it New Elks slash Prado Intersection. That's a waypoint as well. And then the other part of the design you might want to kind of focus on is Elks Lane. Elks Lane continues to Prado, basically connecting at the northbound on and off ramp area, but in the future, it's proposed to wrap around the RTA facility, we're on that recently constructed portion of Elks Lane, and then come down through here. So moving to what the Prado Interchange project might look like in the future, this is the preferred alternative. This is the, the wider facility that we'll talk about first. So over on the left-hand side, you won't see the roundabout, but it's just a little bit off to the screen. You'll see the northbound on and off ramps right through here. We have the new Elks Prado Intersection, of course, the city's corporation yard and, and RTA facility. The neat thing about this display, and thanks for Consoor for doing this, is in the darker portion of the layout, you see the dark roadway section right here, and then it goes lighter and then darker again. That indicates where the roadway is on, on grade or on, on, on ground. The lighter portion of the facility is where the bridge is. So there's basically two different cost factors. When you construct a roadway on the ground, it's much cheaper than when you do work on a bridge. And so that's the, the, the real, the real reason for the, the discolorations right there, so you can see that. So the Prado Interchange project isn't being constructed in a vacuum, it's actually a suite of projects that will be implemented in the future to provide a multimodal corridor from Broad Street to, to basically Madonna. So the first project that we're talking about tonight is the Prado Interchange project, and we've kind of gone through that a little bit. The second part, or the second project, which is directly adjacent to the Prado Interchange project, is the bridge project. And that will replace the existing bridge over San Luis Creek, do some road widening, will also install some utilities in Higera Street, and will also do some additional bike lane work all the way down Prado to generally about Sierra Meadows. Finally, in the future, there'll be a road extension project that will connect Broad Street to, to Madonna. That will address key growth areas in San Luis Ranch, it'll allow a future development in Margarita and the Tank Farm area. These projects have all been evaluated at some level with environmental documents along the way, roadway extension, interchange, and of course, the bridge replacement. And this, once complete, this will allow a third crossing over US 101 in the southerly portion of the city. Before we jump into the Prado Interchange project, I wanted to quickly talk about the Prado Bridge Project, so the Bridge Project. And this display, it looks a little funky, because if you look at the, the roadway section going over the top of the creek, you'll see the gray area, and then below it, you'll see the vegetation of the creek. This is a good display, actually, when you think about it, though, is this portion on the, on the northerly side of the screen, or where the cursor's at right now, that's generally the location of our existing bridge. So that's the width of our existing bridge. The new bridge basically comes from this black line all the way down to this black line, providing, providing four travel lanes, a couple turn lanes, sidewalk, protected, protected bike lanes and on-street bike lanes as well. And this is hot off the presses, we got this today from our consultant who's doing the, doing some rendering work for us. This is a, a rendering of what that project might look like in the future, orienting you, you'll see Higera Street right through here, this is Prado, this is the new bridge being installed, and looking over here would be the interchange area. So you'll see a wider facility that, that supports all modes of transportation. So back to the Prado Interchange project. Our Prado Interchange project is a, it's a, it's a partnership project between the development community and the city and Caltrans. We are following the Caltrans delivery process. So basically, it's broken down into four phases. Phase one is the identification, is there actually a problem that needs to be solved? And we, we discovered a problem, and that was documented in 2018 with the project development, with project study report. The second phase is, is looking at all the different alternatives that we can implement to try to solve the problem, and, and looking at it from environmentally as well. And so we looked at the different alternatives and selected the one we wanted to pursue in 2023, and we completed that project report in 2024. We're, we're in the phase three of the delivery process right now, it's the plan specifications and estimates phase of the project. We awarded a cons, a contract to Consoor in, in February 2025, and we're under the value analysis phase. And so there's a bit of a nuance here, and it's, Caltrans allowed us to move past the Phase Two work and into Phase Three with the idea that we would come back and look at the value analysis work and implement that with a project supplemental report. It's of great value to the city that we're able to do that, and I'd like to thank Paul Valdeo from Caltrans for helping us get there. So we're in that phase right now, and that's what we're doing tonight, is kind of looking at the things that we knew about in 2023 and some of the things that Consoor has brought to our attention today. So based on council's guidance tonight, we'll prepare a project supplemental report that you'll get to see again, and then we'll submit to Caltrans in probably mid-2026. And based on the timelines and what we're understanding of the project right now, we believe we'll be in construction in 2029 with roughly a two-year construction duration. So there's, there's two phases of the value analysis, the stuff that we knew about in 2023, which is presented on the screen right now. And these are things that are largely, won't change the scope or the feel of the finished product. So these were identified in 2023 by a team of Caltrans staff, consultants, and stat, and city staff that met and looked at different alternatives on how we could reduce the cost. So we looked at different ways to install the, the structural systems for the bridge that will keep it up in the air. We looked at using prefabricated, prefabricated girders instead of pouring in place. We looked at reducing the design speed, and all those things really did was reduce the, the length and the height of the bridge. Doing so saves money. And so those three things are, are definitely recommended for implementation. In addition to using some more recycled materials and our plans and specifications can reduce those savings. We'll talk about lane narrowing in a bit, but those, those submission totals is roughly about $8 million the city can save if we, if we choose to implement that, and that is staff's recommendation that we implement that, because it's largely will be unseen by the, the user of the facility. So Consoor went a step above that as well. So they looked at the things that we already identified, but they also looked at things that we hadn't identified, and they took a fresh perspective on it. And from, from my vantage point and how they explained it to me, I really appreciate the work they did here, because they identified our existing context. And so looking at the, the display right here, you'll see Prado Road, and you'll see, you'll see a bike, a shared use path that we have on Prado Road, the Bob Jones Trail. It basically terminates at Prado Road right now. They also identified another shared use path on San Luis Ranch that was recently installed. And so the, the question became, well, why aren't we connecting these shared use paths with shared use paths? The thought process was generally, hey, we can be more efficient with the space that's necessary on the bridge if we use that facility. So looking at that, and as they explained it to us, we looked at the context of Prado, and we've broken it down into three different segments for, for consideration. Generally, we're reducing the bridge width down from over 103 feet to about 63 feet, so that's a substantial savings in, in segment one. So that's a substantial savings in Segment One. And then, and just to be fully aware of things, these are very high-level designs that we have. We got this idea, we looked at it, we looked at the cost savings. And like I said, we need to get to council to get some direction on whether we need to invest more in this alternative. And so that's what we're doing here tonight. So we don't have all the details completely ironed out, but the big picture is, do we want to reduce the bridge width? So looking at the corridor in three different segments, you'll see Segment One, Segment Two, and Segment Three. Segment One is generally connecting to San Luis Ranch and moving to the northbound on and off ramps. Segment Two begins where Segment One ends and goes to the new Elks-Prado Road intersection. And Segment Three, Segment Three is really our transition piece. It's how do we connect Prado Interchange to the Prado Bridge Project? What improvements we install with Prado Bridge we should match or connect to with the interchange? And so that's really the rationale for that. So before I jump into Segment One, I just want to kind of orient council to the preferred alternative roadway section. And so the preferred alternative that's currently under design or included in the project report right now is four travel lanes going over US 101. One turn lane in the middle. We have two on-street bike lanes. We also have two protected directional bike lanes. Those are the Class Four right here in the sidewalk area, or adjacent to the sidewalk area. And then, of course, the sidewalk. So the grand total of that's just over 103 feet, you can see right here. So with that in mind, Segment One, the proposed Segment One is a bit smaller. And so you'll see the proposal for Segment One right now includes a sidewalk, a shoulder or a Class Two bike lane in the roadway, two travel lanes going across US 101, a turn lane, another bike lane, and then, of course, a shared use path on the southerly side. The shared use path allows us to be more efficient with the space that we provide for bicycles and pedestrians and reduces the overall bridge width. And again, that's from Froome Ranch to basically the on and off ramp for the northbound US 101. Segment Two is wider. Segment Two needs to be wider to facilitate the ingress egress for the northbound on and off ramps. So basically, what we're seeing here is sidewalk, bike lanes, two travel lanes in each direction, a center turn lane, and another shoulder slash Class Two bike path on the roadway and the shared use path on the southerly side. You'll see this display looks slightly different than what's in your staff report. This was informed by the ATC, but I'll get into that just a little bit later. And this is Segment Three. Segment Three, it really, there's two different ways Segment Three could look like right now. And basically, Segment Three connects, of course, to the interchange, to the Prado Creek Bridge. So Segment Three, the top section, shows more of if the Prado Bridge Project stays unchanged. We should probably do something more similar to Segment Three, providing some space for the directional bike path in that roadway segment. If we go in and do some additional work in Prado and change some configurations, maybe it should more match the lower section for Segment Three with the Class Two bike lanes on the roadway and the southerly, in the southerly shared use path below. So generally, they have basically all the same facilities except for two different things. The lower one has on-street bike lanes, and the upper one has the directional protected bike lanes. And so with that, I'm going to hand it over to Brent Lemon with Consort to talk about the traffic analysis that occurred.
So we took, we took a look at the corridor within its context. And one of the things that I want to point out here on this figure is just orientation to spacing between traffic movements or nodes called intersections. So from Froome Ranch Roundabout to the ramps, that's roughly 800 feet. From the ramps to Elks, the new intersection, that's about 660 feet. And then from Elks to Higera, that's about 900 feet. We took a look in the traffic operational analysis in two different ways. We took a look at intersection, traditional intersection analysis using what's called Synchro software, which really looks at the intersection and isolation. Those results proved to operate well. The underlying operational assumption that has been used is consistent with the city traffic model for 2050 that assumes full land use general plan build-out. So fairly conservative from the standpoint of traffic generation with an assumption of full build-out of the general plan land use assumptions. What we then did was, because these intersections are fairly closely spaced, typical methodology using Synchro doesn't really account for the interaction that occurs between these nodes. And so we find micro-simulation models typically will reveal how operations occur within a system of intersections. And so we took a look at the AM and PM peak hours for this stretch of roadway with the assumption, mentioned before, of a two-lane overcrossing. So within the other segments, Segments Two and Three, we've got multi-lane configurations to handle traffic operational movements. What I wanted to point out in the AM peak, which is also consistent with the PM peak, for mainline Route 101 operations, the on and off ramps are operating exactly the way that we would want to see them, which means at the exit point and the merge point of the on-ramp, the exit point of the off-ramp and the merge of the on-ramp, we're seeing free-flow conditions. In other words, there is not an impact or an adverse impact to mainline 101 operations. And that's the case in both peak periods. If we go to the PM peak, we can see that directionally, along Prado, the westbound direction becomes a little bit more congested. So in the PM peak, westbound Prado to the interchange, from Higera to the interchange gets a little bit more congested. And if you go back to the AM peak, you can kind of see the difference. So in the westbound direction, in the AM, everything looks great on Prado. In the PM, that's where we start to see some congestion, which is what we would anticipate. Next slide. So what we did was, we took a profile of a volume profile that represents a 24-hour period so that we could see what was happening in the peak periods, which are relatively small in terms of typically, you end up with a two-hour AM peak and a two-hour PM peak. So out of four hours of the day, you have your peaks. And the rest of the day, typically, traffic operations are not an issue. So I want to plant that thought in your mind. So as we took a look at the two-lane operations, we've kind of struck that horizontal line saying this is kind of your two-lane capacity. And above that, you would experience some congestion. So in the eastbound direction, which is the lighter shaded volume curve, you see that in the AM on Prado Road, we have an AM peak as we come from the Froome Ranch Roundabout into the ramp intersection, which is what we would expect. So we experienced some spillback, what we call spillback queuing, that would go into the Froome Ranch Roundabout during this AM peak. Otherwise, throughout the rest of the day, within the eastbound direction, we've got great operations, no issues. So in the eastbound direction, our concerns would be AM peak from the ramps to Froome Ranch. As we take a look at the darker shaded curve, that's our westbound direction, and it's peaking in the PM period, like we pointed out in the simulation model, for again, about an hour and a half in the PM peak. So we're above our capacity threshold for that period of time. And we experience spillback queues, as shown on that previous graphic, where we're getting queuing along westbound from the ramps through Elks and back into Higera for that small period of time. The only way to alleviate that condition for that hour and a half period is to add another through lane in the westbound direction. So those are some of the trade-offs. But overall, kind of in summary, next slide. Kind of in summary, in terms of the traffic operational performance, again, using full general plan build-out land uses, US 101 on and off ramps operate acceptably at all times. Prado Road would operate acceptably up to year 2045. So we estimated an opening year roughly of 2030. We are using 2050 traffic demand numbers. So for our design period, it's a 20-year design period from 2030 to 2050. 15 years of that design period, we operate acceptably with a two-lane overcrossing. As we get into beyond 2045, the westbound is predominantly more concerning or at least more congested for periods beyond 2045. Again, if we experience general plan full build-out. We also did another threshold test where we took a look at what happens if we, say, only achieved 90% of the expected growth in the general plan. If we only experience 90%, we are able to operate acceptably during the entire design period. We have no spillback queuing that results. And the only condition that, which results in the spillback queuing is if, in fact, we realize the full build-out of the general plan land uses. So that gives you kind of the operational performance of a two-lane overcrossing and puts it into some perspective.
Thanks, Brent. Just a couple caveats there is, you know, we're talking about general plan build-out in 20 years into the future and how well or how sound is that science? I think we've seen that our growth rates are a little bit less than anticipated. And then we've also seen that our population numbers are less than what we'd assume as well. So take that with a grain of salt that in 20 years, that we'll be having some roadway congestion here. One of the couple of things that we can do, though, to prepare for the future and the additional widening of this improvement, if necessary, in the 20 to, you know, 40 years, is we can ensure that all the utilities within the area that we need to operate to expand are clear. We also look at our structure to make sure that we can easily add on to it. And those are the things we'll be incorporating into the project report if council chooses to move forward with this reduced build option. Costing, for what we're looking at right now, in the upper left-hand corner of the screen, you'll see our expenses, what our plans are. And there's three different columns here. Generally, we looked at what our costing for the different phases of the project would be under the preferred alternative scenario. So if we did nothing, right now, we're looking at an approximate cost of about $147.5 million. If council was to choose to only implement the 2023 value analysis work that we've done, that's at $8 million of savings, and that's what the second column is representing. And if council was to both take the $8 million and the $12 million with the lane reduction, that's the third column that we're looking at. So the totals are listed below, and you can kind of see the math there. One of the other things that we did was also looked at the annual savings. Because if you look at our funding plan below, you'll see that generally, our funding regime is comprised of four different sources. Local funds, so that's our local revenue measure and perhaps future debt financing to fund this work. We have some regional funds provided by the county right now. We also have developer funds that are coming into the project, and we're using some San Luis Ranch dollars right now to fund the work that we're currently doing. And we have some transportation impact fee funds that will help with that as well. And then, of course, we're planning on some grants from SlowCog and other future places. So really, the intent was to try to reduce the future debt financing needs for this project. And really, the rationale that we've come up with here is on the left-hand side of the screen is really, we want to reduce our project cost to the maximum extent practical to build a project the community needs. But then we also want to leverage as much grants as we possibly can. And so the project itself has a grant writer that will be helping us with that work. We have a citywide grant consultant who's been very successful helping the city at paying grants. We're also working with SlowCog to package this project with other projects to help achieve some grants that way. And then council in February authorized us to issue an RFP for a lobbyist. And after we get done here tonight, that'll be the next thing, is doing the RFP for the lobbyist with really the goal to try to reduce the debt financing to the maximum extent practical. So just on the annual savings part of it, so if we reduce the project down by $8 million or by $20 million, that's an annual savings to the city of roughly $500,000 or $1.2 million, depending on which option was selected. And really, that's, the current plan for the debt financing is to come from the capital plan. So these would be $500,000 or $1.2 million for the future projects you could do annually. So those are anything in the general fund fund. So those are parks, active transportation projects, roadway paving, sidewalk, urban forestry. So that gives council some options in the future. Concurrents. So our public safety staff have evaluated the project. They did it on a quick turnaround, so many thanks to our public safety folks. It's really providing another connection across US 101. So it's helping us get across the freeway, and so it provides benefit, improves our east-west connectivity. It will reduce our response times in that area of the city. One of the caveats or one of the requests that our public safety staff have made is to put signal protection devices on the signals within the project area. And we've evaluated that. We've worked with Caltrans where this is something that we can implement. So this was, this project was also evaluated by the ATC. And there's four different recommendations the ATC provided to us. And let me kind of walk you through what we've done with some of those recommendations. So the upper left-hand section is what we presented to the ATC. And based on ATC feedback, this is what we've presented to council in the presentation. So the upper left-hand corner shows the Segment One, generally with the travel lanes and the center turn lane and the sidewalk. What we've done is we removed the barrier based on ATC feedback with concerns about handlebar strikes and also elevated that area to provide the southerly shared use path. So that's with input from the ATC that's been shown to council. Additionally, ATC had some input for us on protected bike lanes and then protected bike lanes and the shared use. And so literally, if you take what was put in the motion, these are the displays that we've generated from those. And so generally, it's protected bike lanes on both sides of the street and then sidewalks on both sides of the street. If we implement that literal option, that means it's the project savings is the $8 million. Basically, the increased cost for the wider bridge and then the intersection improvements that are necessary would only allow for $8 million savings. And then if we also implement that with the shared use path on the side, that would further decrease our savings, I believe, to $4 million in total. further decrease our savings, I believe to 4 million in total. So based on council feedback, we'll, we'll take that information. We'll continue with the, the, the design work that's necessary. We'll take that information and put it in a, a project supplemental report that we'll review with Caltrans, make sure we have concurrence with, we'll take to a community meeting, much like we did the initial project report down in the corporation yard. And then we'll be back to council probably sometime in mid 2026 with an updated report for your concurrence prior to issuance to Caltrans. Staff's recommendations is to, one, receive this information. Thank you so much for your time. Two is to implement the value analysis that saves the 8 million. Three is to implement the value analysis that saves the 12 million. And then also is to direct staff to, to implement some sort of shared use path on the southerly section all the way down to Higera Street. And then perhaps look at the Prado Bridge Project to see if there's some cost savings or some other things that we can do to make the Prado corridor more cohesive. And so generally, that's staff's presentation. We have a slew of folks that are here to help answer questions and I'm thankful for your time.
Thank you so much. That was a lot to get through and I really appreciate just the changes I know in my, I guess it was, I don't know if it was a 221, no, I think it was just a 1. Anyway, I appreciate the additions of the directions and the little inserts of the sections because it just helped me picture it a little bit better. So, and hopefully, if people wish to go back and watch this, they can follow along as well. Just one quick question you asked about, or you mentioned about public safety. When I look at figure 10 and figure nine, okay, so figure 10, sorry, without the barrier, I assume that means that would make it easier for emergency vehicles to get through versus when it has the large cement K rail on the earlier, yeah, right there, sorry. The one on the top left would make it more difficult to have emergency vehicles get through, but the one on the bottom allows emergency vehicles to get through easier, right?
My, my hope would be that emergency vehicles weren't in the southerly section of the, the roadway. I would, really, the intent would be for vehicles to pull off to the side and emergency vehicles probably use that center turn lane to get from to and from the different emergency needs. What this, what the removal of the barrier does provide is it, it, it reduces the likelihood of minor bicycle incidents from hitting the handlebars or, or something like that. The barrier probably would protect more if an errant vehicle went in there, but you have to balance the, the risk of that happening versus the impact of that happening. So it's more likely that more people would accidentally hit their handlebars more often than an errant vehicle would go off the, the side of the roadway. So it's a balancing impact.
Okay. Thank you so much. With that, Assistant City Manager, would you like to add?
Yeah, thank you. And thank you for the presentation. I just wanted to clarify a little bit on the, the ATC recommendations. We did have a couple of correspondents and we have somebody from the, the team here tonight. So I, I think just generally, I hope I'm characterizing this correctly. I, I think there's a, a general support from the ATC on the staff recommendations and a hope that depending on what is sort of allowed through the Caltrans process, if protected bike lanes can be provided as opposed to those on the street bike lanes, that would be great, understanding that's probably not possible, but that was sort of their hopes and wishes, that we don't, they don't want to increase the, the width of the bridge, but to make as best use possible. And then when you get through that segment one onto the, to the next segment that goes from, you know, the, the onramps to Elks and all the way to the, the next bridge project, that protected bike lanes could be part on both sides, right? Again, where feasible, I, I'm hoping I kind of characterized that correctly. The motion was, it was a complicated motion, so we, we all can learn from those things. But I, we all want to make sure that we're transmitting the information with the intent that the committee was seeking. So hopefully, that's helpful. We obviously have a member here that can make sure that I did that correctly.
Perfect. Thank you. I see some nodding in the audience. Vice Mayor.
Sorry, just taking some notes on that. So thank you to staff for spending a lot of time. And they spend a lot of time with me, so I'm sure if they spent a lot of time with any of you also, then they spent a lot of time on this. So appreciate that extra, extra energy that you all put into this. Couple clarifications that I learned during my discussions with you that I don't, I just want to make sure everybody else heard too. On segment one, the, the on-street bike lanes, I'm going to call them, I can't, I can never remember what's class one, two, three, four. Yes, so those are technically, those are technically Caltrans required buffers. Is that correct? So we've, we've turned them into bike lanes so that they can be kind of multi-use, but technically, we have, have to have them in Caltrans's eyes as buffers, correct?
That, that is correct. So the, the bike lanes that you're seeing, the class two on roadway bike lanes that you're seeing are dual purpose. And so if we didn't have that as a bike lane, we'd still have that five feet there and being used for just a shoulder only.
Right, okay. So that, that's, that was important to me because if you were to make those buffered, that would be extra feet, again, at half a million dollars a foot. In order to make those buffered, it would add to the width of the bridge.
It would, yes.
However, in segments two and three, we are not bound by the same rules. So we could potentially add a buffer to that area a little bit more easily. It would still be costly, but would it be the same cost?
Yes, it would actually. Let me go through to this display right here, which I put it right here. So segment two is, sorry, this area right through here. And this area is part of the bridge as well. And so adding width to this structure is still is the, the 500,000 per, per, per foot. Do we have more flexibility with what we do there? Yes, to a certain extent, but it still is costly.
Okay. And so in segment three, same thing?
No, segment three is, sorry, I'm, I'm going to make everyone nauseous here and I apologize.
Can I just add one thing? So you mentioned earlier the dark section, so that segment, segment three would be all in the dark section?
Yeah, all in the dark section. So segment three is, is a normal roadway, except for the caveat of where we're going over the bridge that we're placing there on Prado and San Luis Creek. So we have more flexibility on, on what we do with segment three, both from a cost-wise and regulatory-wise.
Okay.
Also on segment three. Also on segment three, we have right-of-way constraints that we're working against on the north side developments. We're trying not to affect anything on that north side in segment three. And then we will have impacts to the JB Dewar facility on the south side. So we're trying to minimize those impacts. So within segment three, we're, we're bumping up against right-of-way constraints.
But the previous plan for the Prado Road Bridge was much wider than anything that we're talking about now.
Yeah. If we were, yeah, if you were to extend what is currently envisioned at the Prado Bridge to Elks, there would be much more significant right-of-way impacts.
So just adding, say, a buffer to the bike lane would still, even if we did it on both sides, would probably still be less space than what the existing plan is for a Prado Road Bridge, no?
Existing right-of-way wise, we have about 84 feet in how we divide that up. We have a couple of displays right here. We do have more flexibility with, with segment three. The lower portion of, section, you'll, we've already taken some liberties with lane widths to try to reduce them to, to the maximum extent practical. Providing additional buffers in there could be a challenge. And one of the other things that we haven't, we're not showing in the display, but we also need to put space in there for roadway furnishings like signs and, you know, high fire hydrants and things like that too. So the other, the other issue is we just don't know. We don't have all the details necessary to be able to kind of divide it up to, to a very precise level of detail right now. We just have some big kind of aspirational direction that we're looking for tonight.
So with the bottom photo there, are we still basically with the now shared use path, the bike lanes, two lanes each direction, are we still getting to about the same width as the previously approved plan for the Prado Road Bridge? Or are we still narrower?
We're, we're using, both, both sections use the, the space available. So there's 84 feet there.
Okay.
And so that's what we're using for both of these.
Okay, thank you. In our discussion, we talked a little bit about trying to make consistent pathways all the way through so that it's not confusing, excuse me, to different types of road users, having to maybe navigate from the shared use path into a bike lane or vice versa, or one type of bike lane into another type of bike lane, one that's elevated, one that's not, based on where it is located. So it seems like there's still sort of some transition details between the segments that we might need to work out. Will this be the last time that we see this design or that the ATC will see the last, see this design? Have they seen it for the last time? Or will there be another time when some of these little intricacies are, are worked out between the transitions and the segments?
For the Prado interchange project, this council will see it probably at nauseam. There is, you know, at least a dozen intervals that we need to go through again. So I think probably the, I'm guessing the next time you might see us is with the undergrounding district for the interchange project. So you'll, you'll have an opportunity for more direction on this project. Additionally, with the Creek Bridge Project, if council chooses to look at a value analysis of that project, you will see that one again as well. I think it's important to check in with the ATC as we go through that and so we can commit to taking those, especially when we're talking about active transportation issues, taking those to, to the ATC prior to bringing those recommendations to council.
Thank you so much. I think that's all for now.
Thank you. Councilor Marks.
Thank you. Well, I'd say this is a really great report. I, I read it a few times and I'm not a traffic engineer, so I'm going to ask a basic question about the turn lane. I can't imagine that anybody is going to be turning in the middle of the overpass, right? What is the use of the turn lane, the turn lane on the, on the overpass? Is it just a buffer between the two lanes of traffic? Or are you anticipating that at some point, someone might be halfway over the overpass and they decide, oh, I made a mistake, I have to turn around and go back? Or is it, is it for emergency? Or what is the use of the turn lane in a situation where you've got a very narrow bridge?
Yeah. And I, I think the answer is yes.
Wait a second.
Yeah.
No, just help me understand why you need it and why there's not like a physical, on some bridges, they have like a physical barrier between the, the lanes, you know, so that you don't have on, head-on collisions. So.
Sure, absolutely.
What's the, what's the deal with the turn lane?
So the, the turn lane, this display, I think, does a pretty good job of explaining the, the initial use for, for the turn lane. So again, San Luis Ranch over here, we have the turn lane. Basically, right now, it's unused space, but we channelize vehicles in and we'll use it as a turn pocket to get onto north, north-bound US 101. Additionally, the same thing occurs over at these intersections for the new Elks and Prado Road. Could we, could we put a median and provide more protection in there? Yes, we probably could. The downside of that is if we need to modify it, say, in the future, our, our turn pockets need to be larger, then we have to kind of reconstruct a median.
Yeah, well, I'm not suggesting that. I'm just trying to understand.
No. It's generally for delineating traffic and moving people out of travel ways and storing them in, in turn pockets before they get on US 101 or Elks Lane.
Okay, I had another question about the contemplated congestion at the large roundabout where Delio and Frum Ranch Way meet. There are a lot of people who live in the San Luis Ranch development. And I'm one of them, but I don't have to accuse myself because my house is more than a thousand feet away from what we're talking about tonight. However, I'm trying to imagine somebody trying to get out of the neighborhood. And being in a situation where the roundabout is so congested and compacted that they can't actually make it out. So this, this was not till, what, till the year 2045 you're talking about, that the congestion would happen? So I'm just curious, do, in that situation with the congestion, are you imagining that people coming from the neighborhoods or coming from LOVR via the Frum Ranch Way would just be able to kind of budge in? Or would the traffic be so backed up that people just wouldn't be moving at all?
I'll take a initial shot at the question, Brent, you can fill in where, where I, I misstate. Generally, we're, we're thinking that the congestion is going to occur in, in, in the out years, in the out years, 20-plus years from now. If, if congestion did occur at the roundabout and San Luis Ranch users are aware of that in the AM or PM peak, it's most likely that they would start using alternate ways to, to go to their destination. So if they know that it's very crowded in, in the PM peak or the AM peak, they might go a different direction to get where they, they want to, want to be. So there's that kind of congestion part of it and people will find a way to get to where they want to be in the, in the quickest way possible. And then additionally, when and if that became an issue and the city was ready to take action on it, we want to be in a situation where that's something that we can implement in the future. So those are the kind of two pieces of it, is when it occurs, then people will probably find a way around it. And then two, when it becomes an issue that the city knows is going to become an issue and we're willing to put the capital there to provide a solution for it, we can implement that. Brent, is there anything that I missed on that?
Yeah, I think you did a good job.
Okay, another question I had about truck traffic. Do you anticipate that these large trucks are going to be going, using this frequently? Would this be an avenue for truck traffic? We do have signs, various spots throughout the city that says no truck traffic. But are you imagining that these, you know, like eight, eight-wheeler trucks are going to be?
Yeah, so truck, trucks will not be restricted. So by the vehicle code, the California legal truck is going to be allowed to traverse this section unless, unless there's a condition where, you know, the city council wants to seek a restriction. So the project is designed to accommodate that vehicle. The truck percentages, I can't remember off the top of my head, but they're low in comparison to 101. So you're not going to see, you know, 20% truck traffic. You're going to see something more on the order of 5% or less truck traffic along Prado.
Okay. And then going to the bike, bike paths issue, my main concern would be the safety of the bicyclists and the, you know, the, the traffic in general. So it looks like to me that the, from what you, from what you've said, that having a barrier could actually, the barrier on figure nine could actually cause problems for the bicycles and for the cars, right?
Sure, yeah, absolutely. So the display I have in front of you now is the display that we initially So the display I have in front of you now is the display that we initially showed to the ATC, and we got some feedback. Initially, our thought process was providing that barrier there is twofold. It provides protection from vehicles, but it also helps delineate the space a little bit better for the shared use path. ATC's thoughts on that, and I'm sure I'll be corrected here soon if I got that wrong, was basically handlebar strikes. The higher rail could impact bicycle riders adjacent to the K-rail or whatever device we put there, and that could cause accidents or create people riding further away from the barrier. It creates other issues. So the usability of it was, the recommendation was to remove that barrier.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have for now.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thanks, sorry, I don't mean to monopolize, but one of the things that Councilmember Marks asked me, reminded me of something with relation to the queuing and the traffic backing up in your modeling. You had two peak times, looking in the out years, 2045 and beyond, where there was queuing back to potentially the roundabout. And, yeah, so queuing back potentially to the roundabout, or maybe to one of the other intersections if you're going westbound, I guess it would be. In those peak periods, did your modeling or your assessment show how long, not only like how far would the lines be backed up, but how long, what time period? Would it be like a 10-second wait, or a 15-second wait, or a 30-minute wait? Yeah, like, how, did your analysis take that sort of assessment into account?
Yeah, so the two methodologies, we took a look at where we looked at intersection performance in isolation. The performance was, you know, pretty solid. And again, that's because it's not taking into consideration the interaction between the traffic flows between intersections. And so when we take a look at traditional analysis of level of service characterization, we were getting, you know, right around C, maybe approaching D, in terms of level of service. When we take a look at the queuing analysis through the simulation, so for the AM peak coming from the roundabout into the interchange, we're seeing a yellow line and a light green line. That light green line is indicating the start of some slowing of an operational speed, the yellow line indicating more slowing of an operational speed. When we take a look at the visual simulation queuing, we get a length that exceeds the available segment length by about 65 feet in 2050, assuming we realize full general plan build-out. So that kind of characterizes that movement. Similarly, in the PM, in the westbound direction, we're getting queues between the ramp and the new Elks Lane that are exceeding available storage by about 120 feet. So more spillback into Prado from Elks. And then we're seeing congestion between New Elks and Higera that exceeds the available length by about 45 feet in the year 2050.
Okay, but that still doesn't really tell us if those cars are queuing back 120 feet for 10 seconds or.
Right.
A minute, right? You weren't able to tell that.
We would have to take a look at delay within the simulation model.
Okay.
Which we haven't tabulated that piece.
Got it, okay.
We were kind of using the simulation model more for assessing worst-case scenario.
Absolutely, thank you. Just trying to get an idea of like, a 65-foot backup seems like a lot bigger deal if it's for a long period of time than if it's for a short period of time.
Yeah, and, you know, operationally, as you know, as you approach signals, you're getting released in queues, right? And so it's never going to be complete lockdown on all movements. It'll be platooning queue movements through that congestion.
Thank you for that, appreciate it.
Thank you. Kind of a long, I keep hearing the general plan if we are fully built out. So what would it look like? And I don't think we have the answers yet, so I definitely understand that. If we are not at full build-out, like, where do we find that ratio of like, what percentage to how many more years out? Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll let Matt kind of talk about the growth.
Yeah.
Growth assessment.
So we were thinking about that ourselves, and we were trying to figure out what the future is going to look like. And so we looked at the past growth rates from census and did a projection through to the general plan build-out population. So if you look at our past growth rates and assume they're going to be the same as future growth rates, our general plan build-out hits about 2066. So that, so that's many more years than, is that another 16 or so? So it's future predictions and population growth and transportation delays is not an exact science, and so that's what we're trying to caveat this with, is based on what we see, it's probably going to be longer, but at the same time, is you go through and you build these improvements now, if we overbuild right now, you'll be taking care of that asset for the next 25 years before it's actually needed to. So there's a balance.
Perfect, thank you. Yeah, I'm just trying to understand the ratio, so I appreciate that. I know definitely none of us have a crystal ball on that, so. All right, I don't see any other questions at this time, so do we have any public comments, City Clerk?
Yes, we have one. Garrett Otto.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name's Garrett Otto, I'm the Chair of the Active Transportation Committee. Thanks to staff for helping clarify our motions. I think you did a good job of re-summarizing our intent. Sometimes it's hard to come to the motion that conveys our actual intent throughout the meeting, and you kind of just have to either go back and watch the meeting, so that's why we sent out the emails and staff helped clarify it. So our, the ATC is generally supportive of the shared use path on the southern section. There's logical connections, and there's not a ton of intersections that potentially add a lot of conflict for the bidirectional movements there. We also wanted to make sure that there's some sort of protected infrastructure that people biking and walking feel comfortable using, whether they're an experienced cyclist or, you know, just somebody riding around with their kid trying to get over to a shopping center. So I think that's what the shared use path provides. We do highly recommend having some sort of single directional bike lane infrastructure, regardless of if it's a Class II on-street or a Class IV separated. There's a general preference to having the separated because it's safer. Maybe some more experienced recreational cyclists might not like those, but in the end, it's safer for them to use it. So where it's practical and feasible without driving up the cost, we would encourage staff to utilize that approach. I know that that kind of complicates the transitions, but I know it's possible with ramps. We've done it in other places within the town. There's plenty of cities that have done it, so I think we can come up to a solution there. A little bit of additional information on why we didn't like the K-rail. It does, for the handlebar strikes is one of the issues, but if you also think about if there were a collision with a cyclist on-street and a driver, and they were pushed up against a K-rail, there's now something very hard, and the severity of that collision could be more severe. So I'm all for protections, and if we can find ways to add like planters every once in a while, something to help that errant vehicle from, you know, plowing onto the shared use path, that would be great, but ultimately, it would just felt like it was a little bit more of a hindrance than a benefit, so thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate the clarification, and I appreciate, Vice Mayor, you are also explaining about the Caltrans and the buffer, because my concern is, we've seen other streets in our city where cars drive down the now expanded bike lanes, and so I just would hate to see that happen on the overpass as well. That scares me for the safety of the bikers, cyclists, as well as the walkers, et cetera. So appreciate the clarifications. Well, with that, I don't see any more questions, any more staff. I think we've already gone through all the comments and questions and concerns, so I think we're back to council for deliberation. So Vice Mayor.
I'm sorry, I do actually have one more question, and it's, I wonder if we could phone a friend, if I could ask Luke Schwartz to come up and answer this. He's sort of our resident, not sort of, our resident expert on the bike and pedestrian infrastructure, and just curious, there's probably some, I didn't get a chance to watch the ATC meeting unfortunately, but I've been talking to a couple of members of the ATC, and I also know that there are different preferences among experienced cyclists in the types of infrastructure and how they feel as far as, you know, riding next to K-rail or not, or other types of barriers. And so I feel like you could ask 10 people which they prefer, the K-rail solution or the elevated, separated path, and you might get, you know, you might get 50% of the people saying one and 50% of the people saying the other. So in terms of best practices and what is done in other areas, is there a best practice choice between one or the other, actually having a physical barrier, either a fencing of some sort, or a K-rail? Or is the best practice solution an elevated with no physical barrier?
Sure, again, Luke Schwartz, Transportation Manager, there's some pros and cons to each. I think one important thing to point back to is in the initial value analysis recommendations, one of those is to use a lower design speed for this project. That ultimately does require approval from Caltrans. The default design speed assumption for an arterial overcrossing like this is 45 miles an hour. The Caltrans design requirements at that speed require a vehicle-rated barrier between a pedestrian facility. So assuming the standard higher design speed, you need a K-rail or something that is rated to stop a vehicle from encroaching into the pedestrian space. You might have some additional protection from a vehicle going into the pedestrian and bicycle space with a taller barrier like that. The trade-off is, one is, as the ATC members have mentioned, is you might have a higher chance to hit it with the handlebar. Also, if you're riding on-street, you might shy away from that K-rail a little more because you're afraid of hitting it, which pushes you closer to vehicle traffic. The other trade-off is where you do need to have a brake. So for example, at the northbound ramps, you can't run the barrier and block off the ramps, so you need to terminate it, which means you're going to need like a crash cushion where you have a blunt end, you can't have a raised barrier like that. So that's a maintenance concern for the city and/or Caltrans. It also, it will get hit, so it's going to be something that gets hit more often. At a lower design speed, designing a shared use path at a sidewalk level, aligned with the ATC's recommendation, is perfectly fine. It'd look exactly like what you see on Madonna Road. I think it's still a high level of comfort. At that speed, while it's not going to completely stop a rogue vehicle that drives completely off the road, the odds are probably low, and I think it's an appropriate solution that meets the goals of what the community wants, what I think, what we can fund and build. I think another benefit is it reduces some of the potential maintenance burden with the K-rail alternative. You've got to get in there and sweep debris and things that collect between, in that pedestrian and bike space, where with the sidewalk level, you have less of a need for that.
Thank you. And is there going to be an additional cost to making that sidewalk level, unlike the top photo on the slide that's showing there?
I'd offer, you know, correct me if I'm off on this, I think order of magnitude, I don't think the cost difference is all that much between having a continuous concrete K-rail barrier versus just building that six inches taller. If you're building a whole new bridge, I think another six inches of that's not going to make a gigantic difference. I think the ongoing operational costs might be lower, not having to sweep that, repair crash cushions, and keep that barrier in place.
Last but not least, while I can understand experienced cyclists wanting to potentially be in that space next to the car traffic where they can go faster, or as was mentioned in some of our correspondence, I think if you're on an e-bike and you don't necessarily want to ride in the shared use path, that area is essentially there as a buffer, at least on the overpass segment. So is there any, I know this probably wouldn't be appreciated by some experienced cyclists, but would it be smart to not even label that, just on that side of the road, as a bike lane, and actually use it like the buffer that it's intended to be? And sure, people could ride in it if they so chose to, but it wouldn't actually be sort of advertised as a bike lane and hopefully maybe subliminally route people onto the shared use path instead?
I think there's some, one school of thought to just say, hey, we want all the cyclists to be using the separated facility. I think the outcomes could be positive in terms of safety. I think the route is, some comfortable cyclists will choose to ride in the roadway, whether that's just called a shoulder and is hatched out, they'll probably ride in that space. I think you'll probably still see some higher level of cyclists on the north side going westbound. Maybe they approach Prado on that side of the street, they don't want to cross over, cross right back. They're probably going to ride in that side of the street anyways. I don't know if you're going to see a substantial difference in safety or use if you call it a bike lane versus a shoulder. If it's a striped area, you're going to get some road cyclists that will ride in it.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, Luke. Councilmember Boswell.
Yeah, are we deliberating?
Yes, sir.
I've spoken a lot about the overall issue of this project, and I'm not going to talk about that today. I'm just going to focus on this particular choice in front of us of the, what's called the preferred alternative, the four-lane alternative versus the value engineered project. So I'm definitely supporting the staff recommendation to advance the value analysis project. I do want to make sure that on Slide 22, that bottom right alternative is the one that staff is proposing. That's the one I support, by the way. Can you confirm that? Is that the one that you're currently, because there's been a lot of versions?
Understood, yeah. And there'll be, it's an iterative process, but that's currently staff's recommendation to move forward with that, and it complies with ATC's wishes as well.
Great, okay, so thank you. So I'll be supporting that as well. As one of those experienced cyclists who wears crazy clothes, tight clothes, and rides their bike a lot, yes, you'd probably get a bunch of different opinions from experienced cyclists, roadies as they're called. I'm not a fan of K-rails, although I've never felt like the handlebar strike was an issue, but the issue of feeling trapped on the roadway is palpable when you're biking next to K-rail. So I much prefer a sidewalk-level path, which is what's proposed, so I'm happy to see that. And even if we did have some capacity for additional width, frankly, rather than using that for an additional buffer on the Class II lanes, I'd rather see that width put into the shared use path. We could definitely use, I mean, frankly, on that section, roadies ought to slow down for a half mile, just ride on the multi-use path, but I know many will be in the road as well, but they're perfectly comfortable riding in Class II bike paths. They do it everywhere. In fact, they ride rural roads where there is no shoulder on a regular basis. Let's see, what else did I want to say about that? I would ask that we look at, I know these are all still conceptual, but I did feel like the Elks Lane intersection corners were too, were not tight enough to slow turning vehicles down. Probably not an issue on the south side, because that's just turning into the city facilities. There's not going to be a lot of traffic going that way, but going northbound on Elks. So I would just ask that we look at how we reduce turning speeds, especially given the way the bike, the multi-use path and the bike lanes are configured across those intersections, sort of like what we've done farther down on Prado at Madonna, where we have those tighter turns to force cars to slow down. So I'd ask that we take a look at. to slow down. So I'd ask that we take a look at that. I had one more comment, but I'll stick in my notes. Okay, I'll stop there. Thanks.
Thank you. Assistant City Manager?
Yeah, I apologize. The Alternative 3 was, I think, meant to be a recommendation, but that's a late add. So we just want to make sure that is also, if that's in consideration, but that doesn't have to be part of your support or motion, but just wanted to flag that, being the value engineering for the Prado Bridge expansion project. Sorry.
So meaning 1 through 4 plus Alternative 3?
If you're so inclined. That doesn't mean you need to, but I just wanted to-
Just making sure I have a clarification. Thank you.
Yes. Yes. That was actually my other note was, I do want to see the value engineering for the bridge project because in my mind, it seems too wide. And I think there's opportunity for consolidating some of the through lanes with at least one of the turn lanes. So anyhow, I think we ought to go through that exercise.
Thank you. All right. Next, we have Councilmember Francis.
Yeah, thanks for kicking us off here, Councilmember Boswell. Absolutely in favor of finding as many cost savings as we can through the reduction in scale. So in favor of all the staff recommendations here, as long as we're maintaining, you know, safety, integrity and consistency of infrastructure types. A near weekly user of the Madonna Shared Use Path, so just thrilled to see more of those across the city on both the casual and inexperienced cyclists. And I think that they're a really fabulous addition to our infrastructure. I did not pick up on the corners at the, at Elks, but I would definitely be in favor of making sure that those are the, the right degree to encourage slower speeds for turning. So thank you for catching that. Absolutely in favor of Alternative 3, conducting a value analysis on the bridge project. This is something that's bothered me for a long time. The renderings make it feel like Southern California all of a sudden on Higera. And it just, it feels so out of scale with anything else we have in the city. So I would love to take a second, third, and fourth look at that and make sure that's really in line with what we need, particularly how then it rapidly sort of necks down on Prado to get through Sarah Meadows. It just feels like there's, there's some gaps there that we really need to look at. And particularly as we're finalizing the infrastructure that goes up and over the 101, want to make sure there's a lot of consistency through that intersection. And also just want to reiterate that it sounds like this will happen a bunch, but it's really important that the ATC gets another look at this so that they can evaluate the design once we've kind of value engineered all of the segments, including the Higera section over the Prado Bridge to Frum Ranch Way, just so we can look at it in the entire continuity there. And I believe that's it for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Marks?
Excuse me. Sorry. I agree with the staff recommendation. I really support value and analysis also for the bridge for Alternative 3. I'm hoping that it might be possible to in some ways speed up the process of actually breaking ground on this project in that inflation seems to be unrelenting and the costs will continue to rise. So, you know, without skipping any really important steps, I'm just hoping that we can actually get there. Because this has, this item first came up when I was on the council in 1998. So it's 30 years ago. Not that I've served every single year in that span. But, you know, and given everything that's gone on, I'm not knocking it that it's taken so long. It's just, I don't, I don't want it to take another 30 years. So let's, let's get on with it. So thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I agree with what everybody else has already said. Support staff's recommendation 1 through 4 and the value analysis on the bridge project seems like an important thing to do since we've pretty much changed by 180 degrees from the very first draft of this that we saw. I really, really appreciate, I feel like staff really heard us in the previous iteration when we talked about considering slowing traffic speeds and if we would be able to with Caltrans's approval and narrowing lanes and reducing the number of lanes to make it more affordable and to just calm the traffic on that section. I appreciate that you heard that request and that, that our, our friends that are contracting with us have been able to do the traffic analysis to make that seem like it's, it's feasible and not cause too much frustration in the future, at least not until 20 or more years out. I, I had thought that the Elks Lane intersection did, I was kind of scrolling through my pages trying to find it really quick. I had thought that that had already included elements of a protected intersection for pedestrians and bikes. But if it hasn't, then I think we should definitely make sure that we do that. And also, again, I'm happy to hear that, especially once we work through some of the transition periods between the segments, that it will get a chance to come back to ATC and want to support their vision of whenever possible, without it creating too much more expense, having protected bike lanes wherever we can. Thank you.
Thank you. In the, in the realm of let's get it built as quick as possible, I think what I'm seeing with the Alternative 3, we have an ability to potentially make it even a little bit less expensive, which might help us get more money quicker from the federal government. Is that correct? It's a hard guess, but you know, Assistant City Manager, did you want to answer or did you want Matt? Okay. There you go.
Oh, so the, specific to the, the bridge project, large portion of that is city funded. So I believe it's, I think it's about 20, there's a highway bridge program, it's funding around 18 million of the project. And then the remainder is basically city funded. So anything that we can reduce that cost would, would save, save the city money. The nuances is with the highway bridge program, 88% ish of that cost is covered by the federal government. So if we reduce, the more we reduce, the percentage will get less. One caveat with that though is, is our bridge is wider than the highway bridge program managers will allow reimbursement for. So I think we might be able to right-size that and not lose too much funding. So, sorry, long story short is, yeah, reducing costs with that project helps us with other projects on Pro Road.
Perfect. Thank you. That's what I figured, but I just wanted to just double check I was understanding that process. So I will say that I am also in support of recommendations 1 through 4 plus the Alternative 3. I will echo my colleagues in the realm of wanting to make sure that as we make potential changes, we come back to ATC and make sure we're continuing. I am always in favor of how do we help create a little more protected lanes, bike lanes? I think we can get more people onto their bikes when we feel safer. As a relatively newer bike person, I don't like to go in scary places. So I think that's where we're trying to encourage people to get on their bikes if they're willing and interested. And that is, got to feel safe. For people who are comfortable already, I mean, it seems like that's not really the issue. So I just, I just want to throw that out there. I feel like that's been said enough times, but I'll say it again. Thank you so much. And I'll pass it over to Councilmember Boswell.
Thanks. I'm just going to move staff recommendation, including conducting a value analysis for the bridge project and consideration of other guidance we've provided.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I'll second it. And then just one last comment. I'm going to sound like a broken record at this point. And with this newest set of numbers, it looks like we would only be trying to finance $65.6 million instead of what we were talking about before, which was $75 million, I think. So it's still a lot of money, still too much money to finance, in my opinion. So hopefully we can continue to push on the grants a little bit more, a little bit more, a lot more, and get it done for less. And that's my second long-winded.
Thank you. And I also want to say that not just grants, but slow cog and the rest. Yeah. Okay. Just checking. Well, thank you. With that, City Clerk, can we have a roll call?
Councilmember Boswell?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shoresman?
Yes.
Councilmember Francis?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Mayor Stewart?
Yes. The motion passes 5-0. Just thank you so much. Again, we were able to look at something that I didn't think would be possible in the last couple of iterations of this conversation. So thank you so much for bringing the cost down as we continue to look into this project. So with that, we will move on to the last bit of our meeting, which is staff liaisons and reports. And before we get kicked off onto the just kind of report out section, I have a little question for you all. So, subcommittees, we do the subcommittee liaison assignments every year and decide where we'd like to serve in our community. I think we have about 17 different subcommittees, let alone the items that are pre-required. So with that, we tried something new last year. We did the special meeting and kind of a brown bag and brought the Excel spreadsheet and tried to hash it out along with as, as per our required responsibilities, the Vice Mayor and myself as mayor. We then divvy it up. In years prior, we brought spreadsheets to our City Clerk. She put them on the beautiful screen there and showed all of the nonprofits and the public which ones we were interested in serving or not serving, or maybe could serve. Which way would you like to do it this year? Would you like to do another brown bag just to kind of get the subcommittees taken care of and done in December? Or would you like the City Clerk to provide a spreadsheet in the next three-ish days and for us to turn it all back in and make sure we get that part of the job done on December 2nd during our meeting? Councilmember Francis?
Yeah, I wouldn't mind. The brown bag gives us a little opportunity to kind of talk through things, which I think is, is valuable when we're weighing sort of being strategic in where we're putting people and experience and all of that. So there's certainly value to taking a little bit of time with this process.
Thank you. Any others before I add in my two cents? Councilmember Marks?
Yeah. I mean, there's been some concern in the past on the part of some council members that they haven't had as, the kind of regional responsibilities that they would really like. And I can tell you now that I'm, in terms of the Integrated Waste Management Authority, I would be happy to hand that over to someone else. This is actually my 10th year on it. And it's in really good shape and we can talk about that later. But that's one regional opportunity that I'd like to, you know, offer. And so if a brown bag, if that would, if that would feel, you know, good for people, I'd be happy to do it that way. I really don't care how we do it. But the, the problem with just putting in your own wishes is that we don't get to actually in any way have give and take among the members. So a brown bag, and that's open to the public, right?
Oh, yes. Any of our meetings, we have all of us together, is open to the public. It's, we did do it in that meeting room, the hearing room, yes, hearing room, last time, because we don't usually expect 100 people to show up for that. But you are welcome to, and we'll move it right back over into here if we want the, if the public is just dying to hear about the subcommittee liaison assignments. But I personally also would love to be able to chat about it a little bit more. I feel like we talk about our calendar assignments, like our own personal schedules, just what works or doesn't work, let alone just, hey, I haven't been able to do this policy committee yet, or I'm really interested in this policy. And I feel like we just have a little more of a flow when that's the focus in the brown bag over lunch-ish time versus having a meeting where we're like just trying to get everything done quickly. So that's my two cents. Vice Mayor?
The first few years that I was on council, it was, I don't think we put everything up on that board. I remember like submitting what I wanted to do and then it went to the mayor and the vice mayor and you all kind of made decisions. And then it came back to us at council and then we could maybe tweak it a little bit from the dais. But it wasn't, it wasn't like you're, like you all are saying, it wasn't quite the discussion. It was more like, oh, here's what you, here's what you said you wanted and here's what you got. Felt a little bit like signing up for your classes back in college, right? Oh, maybe you got it, maybe you didn't. And I think there was some concern that maybe that wasn't transparent enough. So I don't think I have a strong opinion, really. I'm fine with doing it the way that we have done it. I guess I can see the advantages to it.
Okay. So with that, I'm going to ask City Clerk if you will help us with the next steps of the brown bag. Do you have any questions or thoughts that you would like to share?
No. My thought is we would do that in December, probably where in place of, granted, during the lunch hour timeframe, but in place of the second meeting that we normally cancel. So I believe, I'm not even going to try.
16th.
Thank you. And again, we'll send out the sheet so you can fill them out, so you can have that ready for you to, to talk about at the meeting. And then we would make the appointments at, the actual appointments at the first meeting in January. And it worked fine last year with that one meeting of possibly slow cog. Just if the person isn't continuing, that they do continue just that meeting and then we proceed with a new appointment if that's what happens.
Perfect. Yeah, that would be good, in my opinion, as well. And then this is not an election year in the realm of candidates, so we don't have to worry about the person being gone or not. So I think we'll be okay with that. So, all right. Well, thank you for that conversation. So as far as our report out, I just would love, unfortunately, I wasn't feeling well and I had to have, I was not able to attend the Performing Arts Center Commission. City Manager, can you report out on that?
Sure thing. Happy, happy to. We did have a Performing Arts Center Commission meeting last week and we just received an update on programming and the budget for the essentially kind of first quarter. And there really wasn't much to report. However, one note that was made both by a couple of different groups was that ticket sales are down so far this year. And that is, seems to be attributed to macroeconomic conditions and also what they're hearing from folks is a reticence to join public performances by our Latinx community because of immigration enforcement. So this may be a trend that we see continuing. And so that was just a remark made and an observation by the, a couple of members of the commission.
Thank you. Councilmember Francis?
Yeah, thank you. Last Thursday, we had our Capsulo Partners Meeting where the Capsulo and the city comes together to discuss Capsulo's projects, namely 46 Prado and their family shelter that they're working on developing there, as well as the status of the rotating safe parking. And everything is now up and running with rotating safe parking, which is fabulous. And hopefully this pilot project takes off and becomes something that's replicated across the county. Have some good progress on the family shelter project. And as with all these types of things, it's a long road, but really glad that progress is being made. Last Thursday, had the Investment Oversight Committee where we learned about the $5.3 million in investment income and learned a little bit about the projections for the economy. And of course, I'm sure all of you are hearing about, you know, softening and continued inflation fears. That evening, there was also the Slow Creek Rewilding Action Plan, which was a really fabulous opportunity to sit with folks who were working in various elements of trying to rewild Slow Creek from the fisheries to the, the plants, to the water health and looking at all those different pieces and trying to come up with a strategic five-year plan for it. Today, we had a ribbon cutting for a brand new hospice facility in the community for Avum? Avum, I believe I'm saying that right. Avum Hospice Ribbon Cutting, which is really great. We are very much underserved as far as hospice is concerned in our county. And so any help we can get on the healthcare front, even in end of life, is really an asset to our community. we can get on the healthcare front, even in end-of-life, is really an asset to our community. And that's it for now.
Wonderful. Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Yes, last week was a busy week. I attended, on, I think, on your behalf, because you were not there, not able to come to the annual, or not the annual, the quarterly Advisory Body Chair Lunch. So, got a chance to hear what is going on with all the advisory bodies, and we just have an astounding group of chairs for all our advisory bodies. It was really a pleasure to get caught up with them. That same day, on Thursday, I attended the Cal Poly Campus Planning Committee. They gave a report-out on all the different construction projects that are happening on campus, and there is a lot going on right now, remodeling of buildings, reuse of buildings, water treatment facilities, dorms, you know, new housing facilities being built. And they have a live cam set up on the campus there where they're building the new residence halls. So, there's a link that I shared with the city manager. Hopefully, she can share it with all of you of how to access the live cams. And they also have a viewing area set up there, and they say that they're going to be doing, they're going to be bringing the modular units mostly in over the next several months. So, if you want to go check out the viewing platform or the live cams, the next few months are the time to do that. And then this past weekend, Saturday, was a very busy day with most of us attending Arbor Day at Santa Rosa Park and planting some trees. And then, I know at least a few of us headed over to the Pumpkin Smash at Johnson Park, and there were lots of littles trying desperately with bats to smash pumpkins. It was adorable, and throw them up against the spiked wall. It was quite cute. And then, after that, I also jumped over to Dia de los Muertos in the Mission Plaza, and it was good to see so many people out and about, celebrating culture and their loved ones, and it, you know, with the politics of the day, it was nice to see so many people out and about. And I think that's it for me.
Thank you. Councilmember Boswell.
Yeah, also, busy Saturday. Thanks to staff for Arbor Day. We got to plant some trees. That's always good fun. And also, thanks to staff for the Pumpkin Smash. Enjoyed smashing my pumpkin, although I wanted a larger bat. The kid's bat was tough. But, and then, yes, also getting over to Dia de los Muertos, which was just a wonderful event, coming together the community. It just had a real positive vibe and really enjoyable. Just one other thing to mention, this week, I got a tour of the Center for Innovation and Entrepreneurship building that's currently under construction in our downtown. It was very exciting. It's going to be exciting to see that project come to completion, and everybody move in, and it's going to activate that corner, which has been inactive for a long time. And I'm very excited about the event space that will be in there as well. And that'll be, my understanding is that'll be available both for Cal Poly uses, but also for community uses as well. So, yeah, looking forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Marks.
Yes, well, on the 24th, it was the Water Resource Recycling Facility Ribbon Cutting. We were all there, I think, pretty much. I also attended the Creeclands event, and the project on Profumo Creek that Creeclands is working with City Farm on was featured, which is nice. It's my husband's project. He's totally obsessed with it. So, I love it. On the 30th, I did attend an interview of one of the candidates for the new CEO of the Chamber. I spoke to June McHyver today, and she said that in the next day or two, they're going to be able to make an announcement. They've chosen the person. They now need to do the background checks and also do the negotiations, and then the announcement should be coming forward about the new CEO of the Chamber. And then, on the 1st, also, the active Arbor Day Pumpkin Smash with Councilmember Shoresman and I both attacked my pumpkin, which had not been carved, so it was just like a big, heavy thing, but we managed to smash it, thank goodness. However, I will say the little kids definitely did a better job than we did, so... And then, the Day of the Dead Celebration in Mission Plaza, I was really pleased with the number of people and also just the level of dedication, all the different events. And Latino Outreach did a great job of organizing it, and our police force was there. And they had a booth, which I thought was really important. On the 3rd yesterday, there was a closed session of the Integrated Waste Management Authority that had to do with labor negotiations. I can't talk about what went on during the closed session, but I just wanted you all to know that the five employees of the IWMA have actually unionized with the SEIU. And so, the whole question of compensation benefits and everything like that has gone onto a whole, much more formal level, so... And today, I was at the ribbon cutting for the Avam... Avium? Is that how you pronounce it? Avum? Hospice Ribbon Cutting. And they are stepping into the void that was left by Wilshire when Wilshire just imploded, as the law school is in terms of the mediation service. So, the community is pulling together, and that's all I have for now. Thanks.
Thank you. Excuse me. I just want to say thank you to the Vice Mayor for stepping in for the Advisory Body Quarterly Committee. It is one of my favorite meetings as well, really getting to see all of the things that we do in this community. And I feel like it's a bit of a storytelling moment, when you really stop and look at all of the work, all of the time, that people are giving and that is happening in our community. And I know that not everything's perfect, like Member, Councilmember Boswell said, sometimes we get some messages that don't seem happy, but we also are doing some amazing work. And, you know, I think today, when we saw our budget and the major city goals, 89% completed on all of these different work plans. That's huge. So, it's just a really fun experience. So, the other really fun experience I enjoyed was last week. One of my favorite things of all year is I get to judge the costume contest for Farmer's Market for Halloween, and talk about adorable. I mean, some of these costumes are just amazing, and some are kind of scary, but beyond that. But most of them are adorable. One of the things that I also get to do once about every two months is the California Men's Colony Advisory Committee. We were really having a conversation about, the warden is retiring, so we will have a new warden after December. What that looks like, we don't know yet, so really important to talk about. And then, something that may seem odd to talk about from the dais, but they are now allowing their employees to have cell phones. Now, they have to be fully serial numbers reported and all of that. Why I mention it is, when you go out to CMC, and if you put away all your personal stuff, it feels really isolating. So, one of the aspects of employee retention is being able to have that moment where you're on your break and you're able to spend some time on your own life after the, you know, while you're out there for about 12 hours. So, just something that was kind of interesting as rules change, also as they're going to be closing the Riverside Men's Colony, and they thought we were going to have the CMC on the kind of the chopping block statewide, but because of the type of individuals that are here and the quantity of mental health needs that we can help with, we don't see the CMC going immediately away. So, that was something kind of interesting to hear about. We have our Slow RTA meeting tomorrow. I won't go into it, because we'll go into it more the next meeting, but I do want to let you all know that Jeff Straw, the Executive Director, will not be at our meeting tomorrow because he's getting the Distinguished Service Award for all of California Transit Association. So, I think that's kind of a big deal. Yeah, yeah. His peers have awarded him, and he'll be in Long Beach at the CTA Annual Conference. We will be talking about something exciting. It's not necessarily voted on yet, of course, but if it all goes well tomorrow, we will be able to accept the Cal ITP update, which means we'll be able to allow, have a cross between our slow transit and the regional transit for lower-income eligibility and be able to use the TAP. So, that's a convenience for individuals to be able to kind of go back and forth and to be able to use their wallet or on their phone. Let's see here. I had one more thing I wanted to share. Oh, I just wanted to say thank you so much to our staff. They really helped to make Marin feel comfortable and welcomed. We got to share some wonderful best practices with Marin about what we're doing here. That was with our business, community leaders, our downtown association, executive director and community leaders, and also many from the city and the county. So, thank you to all who are part of that. And I know we already talked about it with the Wharf, the ribbon cutting, but it is such a huge accomplishment, and I believe it was 100 years of the wastewater resource facility, and hopefully, it's 100 more years till anyone has to deal with that ever again. So, thank you for the clean water and the less smelling water. Really, really appreciate that. And Sally Soupy, Soupy Sally, my tree that I got to help plant with the city manager and many others.
Oh, God!
It was...
I was in there.
And Councilmember Francis. Thank you, thank you. It was quite a process, and so while we were talking about our one tree that we planted, we planted many trees throughout Santa Rosa Park, and many took home to be free trees to help us get closer to our 10-tall, which is so many trees being built, or sorry, being planted, so that we, being built. It's being planted so that we could have better, cleaner air and a better environment as we continue on. With that, I will say thank you, and we will see you all in two weeks. I hope those who get to have Tuesday, the 11th, off celebrate Veterans Day and just thank a veteran that has been serving our country. Thank you so much, and good night.